Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bruegge.
Here.
Dr. Di Benedetto.
Here.
Mr. Cipriani.
Here.
Mr. Duffy. Chairman Wood.
Ms. Close.
Here.
Mr. Levy. Mr. Sienna.
Here.
Mr. Weinstein. Mr. Burley.
Here. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to start by thumb through the situation at last week's meeting. Who was not here last time was here tonight?
Dr. Di Benedetto.
All right, Dr. Di Benedetto was not here. Have you had an opportunity to listen to the tape yet?
I read 200 pages, correct.
Was it all 200 pages?
All 200.
Have you signed the certification?
I did not sign the certification.
But you will, okay? And I believe that he's the only person. So, the reason why I'm asking that numbers in the public is because, as we announced at the beginning last week, if you are not here to listen to a segment of the hearing and you listen to the tape or read a transcript, you are legally able to vote at the end. That's why we went through this. Mr. Weinstein was a little late last time. I understand that he will be reading the transcript and he will provide that certification. All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman.
The notice requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting have been satisfied. A copy of the notice has been sent to the Esberry Park Press and the Coast Guard and filed in the office of the Council Clerk on February 20th, 2019. There are emergency exits through the auditorium doors and two exits at the rear room. We have no smoking policy and no new testimony will be taken after 11:00 p.m. All meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the County Promotions Community Table Channel, Channel 22 on Verizon FiOS and Channel 77 on cable. All cell phones must be turned off or if you need to make a call, please make the call outside the meeting room.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Mr. Weinstein has arrived, so he will have to listen to a tape or read the transcript for purposes of tonight. You and I discussed just before the meeting started, there was a question by some members of the public about the nature of special meetings and the next meeting. And, Ms. Krymko, I would suggest you listen to the tape and if you have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Will we discuss according to Ms. Wenzel?
Yeah, there was a question about the nature of these special meetings. Now, Ms. Krymko, at the end of last meeting, pointed out the procedure with special meetings. They are permitted under our ordinance and they can be granted along the lines of what was granted last week. But there was a question about whether or not the meetings should be shorter, but as the chairman notified me, there are some restrictions on that because the board said that meetings, special meetings, are starting at 7:00 and ending at 11:00. And for those of you who don't show up on a regular basis to our regular meetings, they do in fact end at 11:00. And they start at 7:00, dealing with agenda items, and we actually start the public hearing at 7:30. So, the Board is very used to volunteering their time, by the way. Every minute that they sit here or sit in this room, from 7:00 to 11:00. I understand comments that may be tiring, that some people feel that they'd like to be some other place, but this is what people on the Board deal with. Now, there was a question also about the procedure going forward. The only thing that you're aware of is that the next meeting of the Board will be its regular meeting of the month. And, Amy, what's that date?
23rd.
March 25th. And so, the hearings, and I use the plural purpose, will start at 7:30. Again, for those of you who don't appear usually, at regular meetings, each applicant, generally speaking, has only one hour to present the case or to have opposition present their evidence in their case. And as we speak, I don't think Mr. Kirk even knows what the hierarchy is in terms of the agenda, but this application will be on that list. Now, when it's early or...
Unless we finish tonight.
Well, Ms. Krymko says unless we finish tonight. But if we don't finish tonight, then it may be heard and it will be on the list. And, generally speaking, it only will be allowed to continue for one hour and the meeting can go on as long as 11:00. Unless, there's an extension of that which rarely happens, but this Board actually has met longer than 11:00 sometimes based on particular circumstances. Was there anything else that I should add?
That's about it. The next meeting will be on the 25th of March. After this one, it'll depend as well as if Ms. Krymko does not intervene. We've been very optimistic. That's great.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board. Again, Jennifer Krymko, welcome to Van Sylverman, Eric, on behalf of the applicant. And I would just like to add that I don't know what the procedure would be at the next meeting if we are on that meeting and there are no other applications on. It's going to be in the Board's discretion as to the length of time, so I don't want anyone in the public to be under the misunderstanding that the rules for the meeting of the 25th are being established tonight. That obviously will have to happen once the Board is aware of who's on the agenda and how many cases are on the agenda. So, with that, what I'd like to do is just introduce into the record, not certainly put it on as an exhibit, a couple of items we're going to talk about tonight. And by way, a very brief summary, when we left off, our site engineer, Jeremy Lang, was being questioned by the public and the Board. We got quite a few comments from the Board members in the public and we prepared some additional slides to the PowerPoint to address some of those. So, what I'd like to introduce, and again, we're going to hand it in, by way, a hard copy as well as on a thumb drive for you, it's an additional eight slides which we're going to show you of the PowerPoint presentation by Mazor Consulting dated 3/11/19. We're going to, we emailed over today to the Board, and I don't know if you all have a copy yet, we emailed it to Ron, I believe. The NJDEP issued the flood hazard individual permit approval dated March 8, 2019. That would be A45. Depending on whether or not we get there, we will have as A46, a PowerPoint presentation by MMA Architects dated today. And then as A47, for identification purposes only, it's architectural floor plans, elevations and renderings for Chick-fil-A prepared by Stephen L. Cooper Architect dated 3/6/19 consisting of five sheets. That's all just for identification purposes because you'll hear it referenced as we go through. So, what I would like to do is reintroduce the Board to Jeremy Lang. He's going to add a little bit of affirmative testimony and then again be open for public questions. Jeremy, you were under oath at the last meeting, you remain under oath today.
Yes, and good evening, Jeremy Lang from Mazor Consulting. So, just to jump right in, Ms. Krymko just mentioned the flood hazard permit, so up on the screen here, I've got a copy of the first page of that. And then I've actually highlighted Condition 3 within it, or highlighted a portion of it, I should say, the entirety of Condition 3 is up on the screen. And then Ms. Krymko's going to hand out the hard copy so you'll be able to actually read it as well. But I highlighted the first sentence which says that the project has determined that this project meets the requirements of the stormwater management rules at NJAC 7:8. And those, those of you not aware, those are the state stormwater management rules.
And that doesn't mean that we're not going to agree to revise the plans as necessary and the details as required by Mr. Fitzgerald because they still have jurisdiction, correct?
Absolutely. County Promotion has independent jurisdiction over the application from the NJDEP, so this is a parallel approval, not any kind of a usurpable rule. And we'll continue to work opposite for it and of course, we're professionals in that regard.
But with the state being this agency charged with protecting these environmentally sensitive areas, they've reviewed what we submitted and agreed that as proposed, it needs to be survived.
So, next slide, Slide number 60, has a minor change to the quick service restaurant or the Chick-fil-A restaurant. What we've done there is shown a small increase in square footage of approximately 177 square foot. And that essentially allows for a little entryway here in the front to be added, then the whole building was also shifted slightly south to accommodate that. It doesn't change any of the layout or any of the other elements of that area, other than a little shift and the minor amount of additional square footage. Does increase the seating by six seats, so goes from 108 to 114, which increases the parking requirement from 36 to 38. We're still under the 42 that are being provided. And I noted here the 62 minus 20, there's actually 62 stalls in the Chick-fil-A parking lot, and we are earmarking 20 of those as overflow parking for the hotel.
And when a formal revision, after you've met with Mr. Fitzgerald to go over the technical items, when a formal revision is done, you'll submit the plans to reflect all this?
Correct. Next thing I want to show you, we had talked more about a shared use path. This would be a path that could support both bicycle and pedestrian traffic. So, what we've done here in yellow on the top of the slide, 61, that would be the alignment roughly of where that shared use path would go. The path itself would be approximately 10 feet wide, having a 1% to 2% cross slope, and then be open to both bikes and pedestrians with appropriate signage. Just put in for illustration purposes a couple of what those signs might look like. And then there's a detail, typical detail, the shared use path. This point is obviously very conceptual. We'll be preparing full engineer plans that formalize this and go into all the current radii, et cetera.
So, this is mainly to show that it can be done and it can connect, and I'm sorry, Mr. Duffy's not here because this was important to him, but it can connect to the crosswalk at the intersection of DL Road and 35, cross over the driveways and the jug handle and go the length of our frontage.
It can certainly do that. I will just caution that the NJDOT will obviously have a say in that because we will go through what will become their jug handle area, so we'll have to make sure we're applied to this concept as well. But the 10-foot width and the other standards I talked about are all consistent with ASCHO standards, which the DOT would typically be looking for, but I do have to just say there is that shared jurisdiction in that area.
So, again, we'll submit it and it would obviously be subject to the DOT if we're thinking.
Correct. Next slide has to do at the convenience store. It talked about what would otherwise be landscaped islands, instead of it being just plain concrete, are going with a stamped concrete. So, this would mimic pavers, decorative stamped concrete. Reason for going with that is supposed to actual pavers, you get the aesthetic enhancements, but you get a lot more durability because you don't have all those independent joints. And again, it's a hot pedestrian traffic area because of the nature of the use. So, by using stamped concrete, we have far fewer tripping hazards and potential for them, et cetera, but at the same time, we get the aesthetic and also the visual offset from the parking stalls.
And again, everything you're showing is really just to give the Board a level of comfort that all of the suggestions that were made can be accommodated, subject to the full engineering which will submit, subject to a new approval of the engineering planner.
Next exhibit is 63. Here I've got both the black and white and the colored version. Let me give you an idea first of where this is. Looking on the right of the slide, you see a little mini layout of the site, right in between the commercial and townhome area on the Southway end. That's where this is located. So, when you look at the blowups, this is the rear decks of that townhome building immediately to the east. And then the restaurant building, Restaurant B, would be immediately to the west. So, this Southway portion would be a bluish color, teal color, would be a safety surface, an upper eye safety surface. It would have a piece of play equipment designed for two- to five-year-olds. There's a bench on either side, the north or the south side, to sit and watch. And then there are also two full-size picnic tables. The rest of the surface would be concrete. And then these over will walkway connecting to the community garden. Community garden itself would be a series of rows or boxes. The boxes can either be one unit or can be parceled out, and then different members of the community would essentially go in and plant a variety of things. And those could be fruits and vegetables, they could be flowers or other types of vegetation.
Two things. First, when you talk about that community, you're talking about the residential townhome community, not the community at large.
Correct.
Okay. And then the entire area is fenced, is that correct?
That's correct.
And it's a four-foot open, 50% open, so it doesn't require a new bearing.
Can you point out where this is? Oh, cut. Thanks.
Can you please show on the big map where that would be again, please?
Sure. So, it would be in the center of the site, immediately between the southwesterly townhome building and Restaurant B. Right where, I don't know if you can see my little indicator here, right in that area.
How wide is that spot?
Scale a little bit.
It's about 50 feet wide. Next, the area is immediately to the west of the retail building, so I'm indicating that with my pointer on Slide 64. It's in the commercial area, it's south of the hotel, about in the center of the site. That's the retail building. And then immediately to the west of that would be this gathering area. That is Rain Garden. And may recall, I went through all the different stormwater facilities on the site. This is one of them. What we're doing now is incorporating some walkways, seating area with tables and chairs. And then also, we're going to relocate, there's an existing artesian well on the property, and that's the photograph on the left of the slide. We're going to relocate that, refurbish that a little bit. And that's where it's shown, at least conceptually here, to be near the seating, so you can have some of the history of the site as well. So, it would be a nice decorative area again, buyer of attention on those areas, it's fully landscaped, shallow stormwater management. And then we're integrating the seating and the artesian well. We think overall, you've got a nice complement of things on there.
And it'll be, there'll be a pedestrian connection from there through the other uses oriented.
That's correct. It connects both to the north and south, to the internal sidewalk system, so from this location, you can get anywhere within the development.
Can you show that on the big map, Jeremy?
Sure. So, on the big map, it's located about in the middle of the commercial area, north to south. Actually, it also about east to west, right in the center really of the commercial area.
Adjacent to Retail A. Can you say it or would you like us to go back to the...
All right. And then my final slide this evening has to do with some sign changes. So, two things happening here. One, the Wawa with gas sign that was proposed immediately to the right-in, right-out driveway on DL Road is being removed. So, we're eliminating that. There was a couple of variances associated with that, so we're withdrawing those variance requests. And then the DL Road site identification sign that was located immediately to the east of the jug handle ramp, we are shifting that to the east. It'll be essentially almost in the middle of Restaurant A, and that's right at the 200-foot or just beyond the 200-foot setback apart from the area of residential property which is located southeast of us.
So, we don't need any variances as it relates to that? That's permitted as long as it's 200 feet from the residential property?
That's correct. It's a fully permitted sign in all respects. We're just simply sliding it a little further east as part of the elimination of the other sign that did require two variances that was just to the east of the right-in, right-out driveway.
And that the work of a strong...
What's on that sign?
The various tenants...
So, that's a collection of the smaller signs that had the various tenants in the commercial area.
Dr. Di Benedetto, if we get to the architect, he will have a slide that goes through all of the signage. Yeah, we could bring it up real quick if you'd like. It was shown as part of the first hearing, we had a signage package that we submitted. If you give Jeremy one second to find it.
So, this is what that sign would look like. It's just from where it's located on this slide, we've just split it a little to the piece, but this is Slide 27, the original photo pack packet.
So, it's not going to be the Wawa sign?
No, the Wawa sign is being eliminated.
Thank you.
And that concludes the additional testimony. So, again, we would open up obviously to the Board's questions first and then to the public. And I would just ask the Board Chairman and/or the Board Attorney, I know that there's a lot of members of the public who have questions, and as you saw at the last meeting, we respect that and want them to have their chance. I would just ask that you caution that the questions not be repetitive and that they limit to questions. I think that, I think too much leeway, and myself included, gave too much leeway to allow for comments during the question period. I would ask that the Board enforce a lot more strictly the limit on repetition as well as any comments at all, limited only to questions. And that would include any annotating agreement or disagreement with my witness's answer.
Can I ask a question? I wanted to, you know, from the other comments that came last week, I just want to ask a couple of questions about the hotel. And I'm not sure what's in our jurisdiction, not in our jurisdiction, so. And one thing I was a little sensitive to is the gentleman who had the 260-foot versus 240-foot. He was kind of brought up how that structure, the size of it, or how that impacts his neighborhood. I was wondering what our options were around that.
This isn't the witness for it, it would be the architect who will speak to the height, but I can tell you that it fully conforms. So, as far as options, I mean, I can tell you from the applicant's position and the legal implications are, you have an ordinance, it establishes uses, setbacks, heights, coverages and the like, and we fully comply. So, it would be very hard for it to be anything but arbitrary, capricious and unreasonable for a Board to impose conditions in addition to what the ordinance requires if we're meeting the requirements of the ordinance. So, the benefit of that consideration is given to the government body when they adopt the ordinance, and it's my belief, and certainly you can ask your attorney, but it's my belief that the planning Board doesn't have the ability to impose conditions or requirements on conforming items.
Yeah, I understand.
So, when it comes to is it causing a detrimental impact, that's really limited only to those things that require variances relief.
Yeah, don't I ask?
Mr. Weinstein, if not prepared to answer, per se.
Sandy, before they say so, if you could speak into the mic because I can barely hear you.
I'm moving over. We need one voice. So, generally speaking, if an ordinance permits a 10-story building, then the applicant can show a 10-story building being proposed, and if it's consistent in all respects to the ordinance, then it's a permitted use and has the permitted sizes. There is a lot of limitation to what this Board has, as Ms. Krymko indicates. Once the ordinance is passed, the Board has an obligation to follow.
And if I could just go one step further, and obviously, I'm going to go into this in greater detail at my close, but really, the planning Board, or like the zoning Board, is limited to a determination if it's consistent with your site plan ordinance and the zoning ordinances. And if it is, you don't have a whole lot of discretion.
Yeah, just putting that aside, so what I was actually asking for, I kind of know what our restrictions are. But I am, I wanted to know if there was any thought given to how to limit the detriment that that adjacent communities could have to actually seen. And I don't know what those options are. I don't know how much was thought about by the planner or the architect or whatever, but if you had some ideas, I'd love to hear them. I'm sure my colleagues would love to hear them.
I can have, Jeremy can briefly respond as he did at the last one, but really, the architect can speak to, when he comes up, to how it's oriented, everything towards the interior of it and all the uses, and I think you testified to that, Jeremy. But additionally, let's just, I think that the real answer is what regards the buffer in between. So, why don't you address that? I know you did it the last meeting, would you briefly talk about that?
Certainly. So, I also want to touch on the layout inherently. So, we very purposely have put this building on the north of the property line because it is itself a barrier to the rest of the development. The hotel is a very benign use, very quiet, it's almost like a self-store or something like that where it's very low-use and very quiet. And it is essentially residential, it's a short term, it's a transient nature, but it is a residential use. So, the building itself and its height is actually going to block then all that activity, you know, glare, noise, et cetera, from the core of the commercial area will be on the south side of that building. So, that building is forming essentially a wall or barrier between the residential development to the north and the rest of the commercial site. So, this location is very intentional in that sense. Also intentional is the more active portions of the hotel are all in the front. So, that's the core area, the outdoor patio, the indoor swimming pool, are all located on the south side of the hotel.
And Jeremy, we went over this, and I think what Mr. Weinstein's asking was about visually.
Yes.
And because we're compliant with the ordinance and we're entitled to have a building of that height or that setback, we're not proposing to mask it from view from the people around it. That being said, there is a significant buffer that's being preserved based on the DEP approvals.
Yes, both based on the ordinance and the DEP approvals, there is a significant 240-foot tree buffer required in this area. And those are mature trees, those aren't new to be planted trees that are at full height, 50, 60 feet tall. And then there's a row of evergreens at the, more at the first floor level that's being proposed along the back of the hotel to take care of that understory. So, between the existing trees at height and the proposed evergreens at ground level, we have a very substantial buffer between the residences to the north and the hotel.
And Ms. Krymko, based on the question last time, I assume your tree expert is going to talk about that span of evergreens that was brought up.
And I believe that, just as an aside, one of the engineers from Mazor Consulting knows this gentleman socially, and I think he's going to walk the site with him and identify those trees and will determine whether or not they're in the wetlands or in the wetland buffer and that he might prevent it from being touched in any event. So, yes, we commit to meeting with him and identifying that, and our tree expert will talk about their location.
And especially for the members of the public, Mr. Higgins, who has been our planner for decades now, is an expert in landscaping trees, so I would invite the applicant to reach out to Mr. Higgins, who I assume would be amenable to walk that site as well.
Right. Once we identify which trees they are, we're happy to.
I have a couple of questions. So, the grade of the, is the grade of the property, is that getting raised by the hotel?
So, yes, that is the lower area of the site, so yes, there is some fill in that location.
How much are we raising the grade here? Are we getting a variance for that grade raising?
We're getting a, while he's looking, I can just provide, overall, we're asking for a variance for change of grade of more than two feet site-wide in order to level the site and bring it even with the roadways, et cetera. So, there is a variance as it relates to change of grade. How much of that location I'm going to...
I got to get the larger plan, my eyes just aren't good enough to read this smaller At the most extreme location, which would be the northeast corner, we're raising it around 7, 7 and 1/2 feet, and then less so as you move toward the west.
So, how is that going to be handled as 35 is not changing, Route 35, that grade? So, are you proposing some type of barrier that's going to go around the property?
But I think what Jeremy testified is that that area is lower than 35 is now, is that correct?
Right, that area is lower in that area, that section. So, there's a retaining hole that goes... So there's a retaining hole that goes along the limited disturbance, the northern limit of disturbance.
Dr. Beneditta is asking about up on 35. We're essentially bringing this grade up to meet the grade along 35. It'll be lower still. Good.
It's still lower?
Yeah.
Okay.
The final grade will still be lower than 35, but we know walls on 35.
And then the other thing about this recreation area that you're coming up, how come it's so close to commercial and not in the residential area? The common area, why is that not in the residential area?
Wanted to take advantage of it as part of the buffer between the residential and the commercial areas.
Yeah, I just don't see it. I don't understand that. It doesn't, I have a hard time getting around that. I read the transcript, and there's talk about not putting, you know, bike paths all around. You're asking if there are children in this development, they have to go there. How do they get in there?
We have a complete sidewalk system throughout the entire development, not just the residential development. But on the residential development, we've got sidewalks on both sides of the road. The sidewalks fully connect to both the community garden and that play area. So it would be very easy for them to walk without entering the roadway.
So is there, do you think you have room somewhere else on the site in the residential area to add additional?
Potentially, there's other, I don't know that we need additional recreational area. We are right next to a very large park complex. And I understand the recreational maintenance for that are really unable to stop the park, but they're there nonetheless, and there is a connection that you can get through it. In terms of other opportunities, it would be, I guess, adjacent to the wetland areas, the wetland finger that's in the center of the site, or I'm indicating now on Slide nine, that finger that comes in.
So that's not built area?
Not in the middle, no, it's not. But around the edges where we've got the string of parking, there's a head-on string of parking here, there would be an opportunity to do some kind of a play area in that location as well.
Well, just, Dr. Beneditta, assuming we don't finish tonight, we can take a look at either relocating or adding additional elsewhere. I don't think that I'm going to be able to re-engineer it here of an hearing.
Okay, that's fine. That's all I had to do, you got a little bit missed from last year.
Any of the members of the board have questions for this witness? No? We'll turn this over to questions regarding this witness's testimony only from the general public. But before we do, I'm going to edit that via. I don't know where all you folks lives. I assume most of you are from Ocean, some are not from Ocean. But I want to take the ones from Ocean Township first. Everybody will get their chance to be heard. The ones that don't reside in Ocean will have to wait for those from Ocean to pose their questions first before they can come and ask their question. But I assure you, we will listen to their questions as well. Whoever wants to ask a question has to queue up behind either microphone or your cell.
Steve Kopeck, Garwood Street.
You remember Mr. Kopeck? Do you want to ask a question? We should be going to testimony that was rendered by Mr. Long.
I have. Okay. That DEP report that we got approving storm, flooding, whatever was going on. Do you know the study was done on Poplar Brook? That would be detrimental to the neighborhood downstream, like towards Ferkside Avenue and such? Because even during a normal rainstorm, Ferkside Avenue...
I have to reject, and I'm going to try and do it as gently as possible, when you say that, you're providing testimony.
Okay.
He's an expert. He testified, you can ask him about what he testified to. You can't offer your opinion or anecdotal information about a situation.
Okay.
At the end, if you want to bring witnesses or be sworn in and present it on your own, you're welcome to.
All right, so in this, in this study that they did for the stormwater flooding, did they take into consideration that 32 acres of forest is absorbing rainwater and trickling it into the brook? And now you're going to take 32 acres or 25 acres of pavement into your storm system and then into three outflows into the brook?
So the NJDEP, as is highlighted in Slide 59, has reviewed the stormwater management system, which evaluates the impact of the development on stormwater and the proposed mitigation measures. And they have found that we have satisfied the regulatory criteria.
Okay.
Rebecca Rean, and I live on Park Boulevard in Ocean Township. Rean, R-E-A-N. So I just had a question. I used to bike down Deal Road when I was younger in high school, and I don't know if you are aware, it'd be traffic constantly. I don't know if you're aware of 35, how people go 60 miles an hour. How do you propose...
Ma'am, could you just restrain your question to the testimony that was given by this?
How do you propose the...
You're getting along diatribe first, so, please.
Thank you. How do you propose the bike lane and the, did you say people are going to be able to walk?
Yes, this would be a shared youth path, so it would be proposed bicycle and pedestrian traffic.
Wait, 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 let me just clarify. I don't, you weren't at, I don't know if you were at the last meeting. We have a traffic engineer who's going to give an entire presentation with regard to traffic. And one thing that may not have been clear, because I don't, you weren't at the last meeting, but was, there was testimony at the original, at the original meeting, we're actually widening Deal Road in that area, and you'll hear, you'll hear about it again through the traffic engineer, but there was testimony about the widening of Deal Road, and then this path will be 10 feet onto our property, separate and apart from Deal Road. So it's not as if Deal Road is going to share this path.
Okay. And in the blue suit, your environmental joke when you walked in was not very funny. Thank you.
For the 26-meters lane, Mr. Lane, you just put us a very nice slide about the artisan well. You indicated that it is to preserve the history of the site. In addition to the artisan well, what other historical artifacts or pieces are going to be preserved?
I have not done any kind of historical study on the site.
If I can just stipulate for the record, as part of the DEP approval, we're required to, as you may remember from the Stop and Shop application many years ago, we're required to also undergo review from the state historic preservation office, which require the initial cultural resource review and will require secondary. So the state historic preservation ordinance, I'm sorry, the state historical preservation office has jurisdiction over any potential artifacts that may be there, and before any wetland permit is issued, will be required to satisfy them. That is not something that Mr. Lane testified to, nor is it something that he's overseeing. There's a different archaeologist who would be handling that with the state.
Yeah, my question was to the witness who testified, or to the expert who testified, not to the attorney.
And he said he didn't? And his answer was he didn't know. And as the attorney for the applicant, I'm addressing to the board, I was not addressing it to you, so.
Now, Paula, your relocation of the artisan well, I'm sure you have some background. Are you aware that this was a camping ground for the Native Americans?
Again, I have not done a historical study of the site.
Okay. Are you aware that this site, the 32 acres that we're talking about, was eligible to be nominated as an historic site?
Same answer, I have not done a historical study.
Is any of the work that you or your firm had prepared for this project and presented to the board and to the public contingent upon the historical study of the site?
I refer to other experts or Ms. Crimco.
I don't, I don't understand the question.
I'm going to repeat it. Any of the work that this firm, the engineer representing the applicant, is contingent upon a study of the historical, historical study of the site?
Okay. His answer is that he didn't perform a historical study, and his work is not contingent on it. Our approval at the state level is contingent upon examining the historic nature of the site, but I believe that this expert said that that's not within his purview or his expertise.
Okay. He, it just, the slide that he presented to us, he did that work, he relocated that beautiful historic well. With what background, with what study he did that? He has to have had some historical work done to be able to pick up this piece that has historical value to relocate it. He just didn't decide because it looks good over there to relocate it. Has to have some background, historical background, either him or his firm or one of his associates to be able to do that work.
I can stipulate for the record, I was on a conference call when it was discussed, and when discussing where to locate this community gathering area, one of the engineers from the office lives in Ocean Township and said, well, as walking the site, there was what appears to be a historic well, maybe we can put that in our rain garden. And that was the extent of the discussion with regard to the well. Should we find out through the state application to the DEP that there are regulatory controls over the relocation, we will abide by most state regulations. As far as I know, the municipality does not have any, nor do we stipulate that the site was eligible for entrance into any kind of historic register.
Now, with respect to the barriers for the grading, one of the members of the board was asking the engineer who testified on the road, but he didn't receive the answer from the engineer. Ms. Crimco gave the answer that it's seven or seven and a half feet lower in that area. What is the grading exactly? Two feet, three feet, seven feet, seven and a half feet?
Just to correct the record, I did not give that answer. Jeremy Lane gave that answer to the board.
So what is there? It's seven or seven and a half feet?
You're oversimplifying the question. The entire site is being graded, and that is depicted on our grading plan. And that varies literally from spot to spot as you move along the plan.
Have you done soil boarding testing already on the site?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand the question. Can you repeat that?
In order to plan the other questions and to address the high water table, did your firm did already soil boarding testing?
Yes, we have done and submitted geotechnical studies.
Are the cut sheets available for the public to see at on your study?
Not sure what you mean by cut sheets, but yes, the geotechnical reports were submitted as part of the application.
One other question. All the study that you have done on this project, other than the incentive that the township has to settle the lawsuit, does this project, have you been able to adequately prove that it's in the welfare of the town?
I have to object, we don't have an obligation to demonstrate that this is in the welfare of the town. We have an obligation to demonstrate that we're complying with the ordinance as well as the municipal land use law. There was ample testimony at the last hearing, in his capacity as a professional planner, that this does further multiple purposes of the municipal land use law, which in and of itself furthers the general welfare. It's not specific to the community, though.
I just want last comment that Ms. Crimco gave to the board to enforce strictly the time to limit the public to ask questions. We are entitled to due process. If the public...
You've given Lauren a goodly amount of time. I don't understand the complaint.
That was, just to clarify...
And as a comment, you're not supposed to make a comment.
We don't, we are not given any opportunity. No, I'm listening respectfully request that you give the residents due process. We are entitled to due process. We are entitled. So please give us the time and the opportunity.
You have to ask a question of the witness.
And all my questions were addressed to the witness.
And just to...
A witness that gave testimony.
And just to, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, I in no way intended to impede the due process of the public. What I'd asked was that the board limited to just questions and not testimony during the question.
And we hope it's limited to just questions and no comments.
And then at the end of the hearing...
But not everybody goes along with it.
And at the end of the hearing, you would have an ample opportunity to offer whatever comments you want. It's just, it's the process that the board takes. I just don't...
We will appreciate you giving us that opportunity.
Hundred percent.
Ms. Sharp, could you just give your name and address?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm Erin Sharp. I live at 1403 Sunset Avenue in the One Masses section of Ocean Township. I believe you said that you were not involved in any historical review of the property. Is that correct? Can you hear me?
Sorry, you just turned the mic down towards you.
Sure. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So did you hear my question?
Yes, I did. And no, I was not involved in a historical review of the property.
I have here a letter between Mazor Consulting and the HBO, and so if you were not involved, your consulting company was. So may I, may I be permitted to read sections from this letter?
Unless that letter is signed by Jeremy Lane.
No, it's signed by...
I have to object, I mean, there will be an opportunity at the end for Mr. Sharp to present evidence.
Mr. Sharp, could you bring that up at the end of the meeting?
I would like to do that very much. Thank you. That was going to be my next question. Now, in this letter, it...
I have, I have to object.
We can't continue about the letter until you bring it up at the end of the meeting.
All right, I'll be happy to do that.
And I would ask, just to remind Mrs. Sharp that to bring copies, obviously, for the applicant to review and for the board to look into evidence.
I have done that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I wish I could speak more, but I will provide the information to you, and perhaps you can ask some questions on your...
Then we thank you for that.
All right.
Hi, Fred Meyer, 11 Chris Place, Nookford. It's been two weeks since your testimony. Could you please refresh my memory on why you're subdividing a lot into two main residential and commercial?
We're subdividing a lot to separate the commercial and residential portions of the project. That will allow homeowners association to operate and maintain the residential portion, and then some other entity to operate and maintain the commercial portion.
And are there variance differences between a commercial property and residential property? Different setbacks or different requirements in that nature?
Yes, there are different requirements for the commercial and residential portions of the project.
But not as separate lots? Whether they're combined in one lot or separated in two lots, the same residential bus to the residential portion and the same commercial bus to the commercial portion according to the ordinance, is that correct?
If that was the question he was asking, then yes.
There's no, nothing that's setbacks or ordinances that govern a residential area that wouldn't apply in a commercial and vice versa? My next question relates to Slide 15 in the original presentation. This should be the slide of Restaurant A. In the past meeting, there were a lot of questions regarding buffers and screening from the property to the streets. Is it my understanding that behind Restaurant A to Deal Road, there is no screening there? Or the screening from the pathway does not continue up? Or the screening from the pathway does not continue up?
That's correct. We have the required buffer width, but we are not providing the solid screen or the berm in this location. This is part of the variance that I discussed in one of the prior hearings.
And to the, I guess it's the east side of the building on the diagram, is that a, that's the garbage area of that building?
Yes, that would be the, that's the loading zone. So it would have both loading operations as well as recycling.
And what kind of barrier is around the refuge site?
That would be a residential wall that would go around that.
Can you, can you point that out on the side?
It's hard to say on the exhibit, but that, this little black rank or square, that, that would be the wall.
And roughly, is that 10 feet high or is it visible from To Deal Road?
I have to check the details and see how tall it would be. Six feet tall.
Six feet tall. And, and I couldn't understand from the diagram that, that one kind of line that comes down to the west side of the ride-in, ride-out. Is that some kind of feature of the development?
This here?
Yes.
That's a sidewalk connection.
Oh, I see. So the garbage of the building will be visible from the ride-in, ride-out entrance and from the field?
Well, it will be enclosed by the residential walls and it has landscaping around that. So while you might be able to tell that that's a refuse enclosure, you're not going to see the trash from the dumpsters themselves.
Okay. My next question refers to Slide 16. So to the northeast side of the building, I assume that was also a refuge?
So the refuse and recycling here is separate from the building. It's located to the easterly end of the drive aisle that's in front of the restaurant. And then there's a loading is on the easterly side of the building.
And that's the same enclosure as the other one?
Yes.
So, so is the open space, that open space to the east of that refuge is the community garden?
Yes, the community garden is located in this area here. So it's just really to the south of that, the edge of that, just starting south of that.
That's, that's as far north as it goes?
I didn't understand that.
I, I couldn't tell from this diagram roughly how far the community garden and playground went from To Deal Road up into that white space on this diagram and how close it was to the refuge.
It goes roughly about half the length. This building on the right here, black and white graphic, that's the town home building. It goes about halfway up that. So the northerly edge of that community garden here is roughly where I'm indicating the point here. Somewhere basically in between the front of the restaurant and the southerly edge of the refuse enclosure.
And from east to west, it's that entire area?
Yes, it's about 50 feet wide and it runs from where this dash line is to this other different dash line.
And is that the, is that the boundary between the commercial and the residential subdivision?
Yes, one of those is the boundary. The other is the 50-foot buffer. So the one on the left or west is the boundary and then the one on the right is the 50-foot buffer.
So the garden and the playground are in the town home, presidential side?
Correct.
And so what is the overall distance between the restaurant and the townhomes?
It's about 112, 114 feet, something like that to the, from wall to wall.
So, so last, last meeting, there was some testimony regarding the setbacks of the commercial from the residential. Does this fit within those requirements?
No. That, that's a requirement on the northerly boundary of the property line?
You don't have that requirement here?
No.
I was just wondering if there was a variance required for that. Are there any other barriers between the restaurants and the residential of fencing or, or whatnot? You made accommodations for the hotel to the residents behind there. I was wondering if there was any sort of similar accommodations made here?
Yes, there's a six-foot tall privacy fence along the rear of the townhomes.
Could you illustrate that again?
So that's located on the 50-foot buffer line running along the rear west side of the townhomes.
Oh, I see. So that's between the community garden and the townhomes?
Yes, so it separates the backdoor areas from the community garden.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, Lisa Minor. I live in Oakhurst. I was just curious about when you were talking about the bill that you were going to need to make because the hotel, that area was lower than the rest and that you were going to need to use bill before you built it. And I was just curious because a few years back, they built a load over-
I have, I have to object.
Well, my question was going to be directly whether or not his company had any involvement in the loads. So would that directly be on point?
No, the witness was accepted as an expert in his field.
It's not questioning whether he's an expert. It's questioning whether his firm had anything to do with that ability.
Yeah, it will make the presentation. So because he's been qualified as an expert, you can discount his testimony as it relates to what he's presented here, but you can't try and discount his firm or give examples of where you think his firm did or did not do something wrong. It's just not relevant to this proceeding.
I'm not saying his firm did anything wrong. I'm asking whether his firm was involved.
And I'm checking.
You have to restrict your questions to his testimony. You can make these comments at the end of the hearing and you can do whatever at that point.
You can't find out whether or not his firm was part of that.
You can't answer that.
I was also, I don't know if I can ask this either. At one of the meetings a long time ago, the plan showed a dog park.
I have.
Again, that has to be restricted until another time. You can only ask questions regarding his testimony at this point.
No, he's never testified as part of this proceeding. So we can only be what happened, what started on February 25th forward. And if you want to ask him, is there going to be a dog park here? That's a fair question.
He hasn't testified to that.
But he's testified to the layout and you can ask him as to features on site. You just can't bring up testimony required here.
You testified about the hotel and how most of the activity was going to be in the front of the hotel. And you planned it so that the back would be a little bit quieter and whatever. I was curious, is there, there is parking behind the hotel, right?
No, there is not. There's only a pedestrian walkway.
Oh, really? So where do the trucks for garbage and things that they're bringing in? I was curious about that because you were saying you were trying to keep it quieter for the people who live back there. But I was wondering, where are they, where are the trucks going to come for garbage? And because that's noisy and a lot of extra traffic and bringing in supplies for the hotel, where the employees going to park?
So in terms of the, the refuse for the hotel, it's at this northerly, north questionably corner. And that's in keeping though with the commercial that's north of us.
And there's no circulation around the back of the hotel? Vehicular?
Right, there's no vehicular circulation around the back of the hotel.
So the trucks are in, and are going to enter through which entrance? The same as resident?
They would enter, presumably, they would enter through the right-in, right-out driveway on 135. And then they can circulate through the site. And then there's a right-only driveway that's just off of this Slide 11 here. Push it back onto 135 Northbound.
Okay, so there's nothing that's dedicated to, to anything like that? And there's, what about employee parking and that kind of thing? Is that a dedicated area or is that?
There is no dedicated parking on the site.
And I'm also curious about the extra parking spots that you wanted for, I believe it was the convenience store, not where it was last week or whatever when you were talking. I think there were two extra parking spots. Am I correct or no? I thought you needed a variance for some extra parking spots. Is that wrong?
That's incorrect. We do not need a variance for parking. In fact, we're providing in excess of what is required, both in the residential and the commercial portions.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Charlie Aria. I live in Oakhurst on Highwood Road. A-R-I-A. And my question has to do with, I was here last week and mention was made of the environmental impact study that was done. May I ask a question about that? Yes?
Yes.
Well, the neighborhood where I live, the backyards are visited nightly by deer.
And I had, he's offering, you're offering-
Okay, fair, that's fair. My question is this. Was any consideration given in your environmental impact study to the thought that when you take another 30 acres away from the deer's habitat, you may increase the incidence of having the deer bolt across the roads? And if not, why not?
EIS addresses the ordinance required review elements, which it has done. There is, as is true with any, with all of this nature, there is a habitat reduction for certain type of species with deer. And that is described in the EIS.
And?
What's the answer?
So what's the answer?
Was there-
Because all it's going to take is one incident.
There's already been like four, five that I see.
Especially on Highway 35.
Again.
Okay, fair, I'm sorry.
Mr. Aria, his response, I believe, was that to the extent that the ordinance requires it, we addressed what they asked for. There was no specific relocation plan or study as to the deer and where they're going to go. Is that 100%?
Should that have been a part of your project?
According to the ordinance and the statute, no.
So because you can do it, you will do it?
Yeah.
You can't have all this clout being in the noise here.
Well, that was my question. I made my point.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Sarah Kowalsk, K-O-W-S-A-L-K, 1620 Melville Street. My husband Dan was the one that asked last week about the setback, 240 versus 260. He's at work, so I text him that little bit of the update from earlier. And he's definitely interested. He just wants to know what the timeline would be when we can make that happen. That will feel true.
I believe that Mike's daughter has danced with your daughter and they see each other at pickup.
Yes.
So they, you can request it for Mike and we have-
Anytime?
Anytime.
Okay. And if there's any of the board members that would happen to be available, we would certainly welcome. They can't. Okay. Then if we can make it happen, then I guess before we move further so we can share that. If we operate under the assumption that the existing evergreens aren't within the wetlands, it really just leaves us with the deciduous trees and the first floor level of evergreens that you referred to that you'd be planting. Would it be within the board's jurisdiction to ask that what you're planting be taller than the first floor level?
It's possible, but it's very difficult to transplant a tree that's of that size and the mortality rate is very high. So the better bet is to install the smaller trees that will take hold and successfully grow.
When our tree expert gets on, you could ask him about the species that could be planted there that could grow very quickly and fill in. And he could also speak, I'm sure he's intimately familiar with those trees. He just hasn't gotten up yet.
Okay.
So I'm sure he'll be happy to talk about those trees in specific as well as the likelihood of vitality of larger trees versus smaller trees.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Kevin Smith, Picton Street, Oakhurst. I just had a quick question in regards to parking. At the Wawa, I didn't see it on the plan. Is there plans for oversized vehicle parking?
There is not a dedicated area, no.
Is, is that going to be considered when laying out the, I guess, the land or the plot?
At this time, it's not. It is something that we could do if more help than is needed for that.
Would you, and I don't know if you're the person to ask, do you know if this Wawa is going to service diesel as well as gasoline vehicles?
They will have diesel, but it will be limited to smaller trucks. So it's not over the road tractor-trailer trucks. This would be more, you know, like your landscaper's truck or something like that.
You said it's going to be limited. Is there going to be any type of postings as far as signage that does not allow commercial vehicles?
It's not that all commercial vehicles are prohibited. It's, one, the staff on the site would not allow large, like tractor-trailer to be fueled there. But they wouldn't go here anyway because these are low-speed pumps. A tractor-trailer will want to be serviced by high-speed pumps. And that is not offered at this facility.
But in theory, they could fill up at this location, correct?
In theory, sure, it's possible, but it's not practical to do. And that is, the staff here would not allow a large vehicle like that to be fueled here.
Do, do you know if that's in their policy or is?
Yes, that's in their policy.
Okay. Is, you know, I was specific with the Wawa. Is there any, oversized vehicle parking anywhere on this plot for commercial trucks at all? Or trucks with trailers for landscaping businesses, for example?
School buses?
School buses?
No, at this time, the layout does not include parking by nature.
Would we be doing anything to prevent these types of vehicles from entering in said land location?
No.
That's it, thank you.
Is a lady behind you waiting?
Hi, I'm Sheila Everhart. And I live at 17 Overhill Road in Ocean. And my question is about the environmental resource inventory that's taking place now and is to be finished by April. And are you planning to incorporate results from that environmental resource inventory, which the planning board is supposed to have the time to study and comment and question? And so are the residents of the town?
I don't know what environmental resource study you-
It's on the, it's on the town website. It's being conducted by a company named, just a second. Krassner, Krasser Environmental Services, Ocean Township. I'm here the auspices of the environmental-
Excuse me, ma'am. Mr. Brody, who is chairman of our environmental commission, will comment on your question.
Yeah, that, that ERI that is underway by the consultant, that should be drafted, is going to be made public sometime in the, during the first or second week of April. But that really wouldn't pertain and I don't, I don't want to answer the question for you.
No, we're not even aware of it and it's not part of our presentation at all.
Right, because that, that would be after. And the idea with the ERI is to have that incorporated in future plans and first to be, to be adopted into the town's master plan. So it would have nothing to do with this application.
Well, I'm an EIA to this plan.
But it's not finished. But it's not finished, and once it's finished, then it'll be adopted, and after it's adopted, then it can be considered.
Is it, is it absolutely necessary to have this approved without the information from the inventory? Isn't it possible for us to use that information for this?
I said, well, let me say it.
So you do a quick one? Couple of things. The New Jersey statute provides a time period upon which applications have to be heard and decided upon. They also have adopted a rule called time of the application rule. And what that means is whatever ordinance, master plan, regulations are in effect at the time we have a complete application is what is affected. So the town could effectively adopt 100 new ordinances, all that would prohibit everything that we're doing here, but by law, it wouldn't apply because under New Jersey law, it's the time of the application. So whether or not that is finished or not, if it's finished next week and adopted the week after, or in a year from now, because of the timing of the filing of this application and it being deemed complete, it doesn't have any effect on this application.
Yes, Ms. Krimko is correct. We used to have the time decision rule, and the state has changed that, based essentially in the concept of fairness to applicants, and now it's time of application. So we can't consider it.
Sandy, if I might, just to help with your question though, the environmental inventory is a snapshot, if you will, of what's existing throughout the town. Their documents that they filed in connection with this application address many of the things that would be in that generally across the town in much more detail as regards to this site. So for example, their soil information is much more detailed regarding this site, which may be of interest because you're here, than you would find in that inventory. So would their tree reports, so would their traffic. All of those items were studied in much more detail and presented in their documents supporting the application than you would find in that anyway.
It seems illogical. That's a comment.
The gentleman in the picture, I forgot your name again, sir.
Dennis Howlett, H-O-W-O-E-T-T.
Dennis, right.
Second T is silent. I'd like a little clarification. Is Mr. Lang the expert also for the environmental impact statement?
I can discuss it, but I'm not an environmental expert.
Was that, is that statement available? Is it already available to everybody?
The library?
No, the one that you gave me on Thursday.
Yes, that is, that is available to everybody. It's on file with the town, and just like you and the other young lady, I've requested, I emailed a copy.
Thanks for implying, I'm the only person.
I had requested a copy. We're, we're happy to share the email so the public doesn't have to pay the cost of the photocopying, or, you know, you're free to share. So yes, it is available.
Okay, so the board has probably already read that?
The board has copies of it, was submitted with the initial application.
It's an imposing document. Regarding page five of your original presentation, there is 0.24 acres that are, have exceeded Ocean Township. Is that correct?
Yes, this is a right-of-way dedication of approximately 0.24 acres.
Okay, is that the driveway that goes into the library?
No, this is a part of the deal road right-of-way.
It's, it's what's in purple, Mr. Howlett, along from the site.
Oh, okay. So the road that goes into the library is down in this little corner over here, in the lower southeast portion?
Yes, right where we're indicating.
Okay. And you're familiar with all the details of that road, that driveway? So that driveway accesses the library, is that correct?
Yes, would access both the museum site and the library.
But do we go through the library parking lot, correct, to get to the museum?
Well, the library's behind.
Right, the library, well, the parking lot, I always think of it as the library's parking lot, maybe it goes through the parking lot to get to the museum.
There's, there's a shared parking lot that services both the library and the museum, this driveway connects directly to that.
Okay, that makes sense. Do you know if it's one-way or two-way traffic, that driveway in there?
Our driveway, the connection will be two-way traffic.
Two-way traffic, and now it'll be accessible 24 hours a day?
Yes.
Okay, do you have any idea whether the guests or the residents of the townhouses will be using that as overflow parking?
No, we're providing, not only are we meeting the requirements, we're actually significantly exceeding the residential parking requirements.
I agree, but that wasn't my question. Anyone in the board think that this should be parking for overnight guests of the townhouse?
We're not proposing...
Sir, that's speculation, he can't comment on that, it's predicting the future.
Mr. Howlett, if the question is, are we intending to utilize that, the answer is no, we're not entitled to it, we don't have an easement for parking, the municipality owns that lot and can enforce who can park there.
Okay, are you going to allow the municipality to put signs there to say it's restricted to the library?
It's not my parking lot.
No, 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 on your side.
The municipality can put whatever sign they would like within their parking lot and below.
But it's not their parking lot, I mean, the driveway starts on your property, right?
Again, we're not proposing any signage on our property, and we're not proposing to park on the municipal property.
I understand that, but would you allow the town to put, say, powers of operation on that driveway, so people would not be tempted to drive through there?
If the town made that request, it would be something the applicant would consider. The town has not made that request.
Okay, great, thank you. In front of the library, there's also a very large retention basin. Is part of that retention basin in Mr. Lang's plans for the bio-retention? Does it access that, does it use that, or will it affect that?
No, we do not affect the township facilities.
So, okay. On page seven, there's a little sliver on the right inside, excuse me, to the left of the library parking lot, and I can't, my tie will lie as you can see that. What is that sliver?
Is there a run in this area?
Yes.
There's an area that's going to be retained in that location, I'm not sure what else... You're talking about from a perspective, or are you talking about from a, I'm not sure from a question.
Is the question what that line is delineating the sliver?
Yes, what is it?
Why is there a line delineating that sliver?
What is it, separate or any else?
So there's a limit of disturbance there, and that's what that's reflecting. This is where for the...
There's, there, that's a limit of disturbance line from the west to the east, so everything to the east of that line will be preserved and will not be disturbed. And as you'll hear, there's going to be testimony from our tree expert as to specimen trees that are in that location that are proposed to be preserved.
Something's going on. On page 10, there's, it's unclear to me, on the low left-hand corner is where the bus stop is going to be, and maybe you addressed this before and I just missed it, how are pedestrians supposed to get to the bus stop from south of Deal Road on 35?
So that would be off-site, is that...
That is correct, but now, but now they just walk across the street, and the bus stop is right there, and they wait for a bus. You're moving the bus farther north, bus stop farther north, it's going to be on the other side of part of the jug handle. How are pedestrians going to safely access from south?
There's still a pedestrian connectivity, there's a crosswalk located across the jug handle ramp, so there's still full pedestrian connectivity here.
There's no sidewalk on, is there sidewalk on the entire part of the jug handle? So what the pedestrian will have, will be a crosswalk in the jug handle to get to the other side of the jug handle, then to get to the bus stop.
The pedestrian movements are the same as they are now, you're going to walk along the roadway, whether it's along Deal or along 35. Pedestrian route's being maintained, being shifted, being relocated a little bit to accommodate improvements, but overall, the circulation's the same.
I understand that, I think, but now they have another roadway cross to get to the bus stop.
By another roadway, are you talking about just the jug handle?
Correct, yeah.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
I hope they're agile. On page 12, I'm addressing, among other things, the hotel. Hotel is 57 feet high, is that correct?
The architect will testify as to the height of the hotel.
Okay. Let me ask this way, is this hotel one of the higher buildings in Ocean Township?
Again, who's...
That's for the architect?
The architect will testify at the height of the hotel, whether or not he did an analysis as to other buildings in town, I guess you can ask him, but...
Okay, so this isn't something for the expert to answer? For the expert to answer, for the buildings on the site, Ocean Township has a great volunteer fire department, are the, in case, heaven forbid, there's a fire, does the volunteer department have the manpower, the equipment, and the skills to fight a fire in that hotel?
Again...
You can ask him questions.
No, he's asking whether or not, whether or not the fire department has the skills, I'm going to advise him, but that's not within his purview, and the adequacy of the fire department is also not within the applicant's purview.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't think I stated that correctly. I should have asked, was that a consideration? Not whether he testified to the adequacy, whether, then having the adequacy or not, is that a consideration for putting in 57 feet of wall, I should have said, of building?
The consideration was reading the ordinance and determining it permits four stories or 60 feet, and we're complying in both respects.
So if, if I may, then it was assumed then that if the governing body allows for building of that height, before they passed such legislation, they knew that the fire departments and the other public safety departments presumably could handle it.
That would be a logical inference.
But the architect will be able to testify as to the fact that it's fully sprinklered and the ability, what type of construction it is.
Yeah, Ms. Krimko, if you have the architect testify, you may refer to the Fire Marshal's report, which is ultimately short, but to the extent that you feel that those considerations were made since February 15.
And Mr. Higgin, that Fire Marshal's report also is on file with the board, and you and the public would welcome to do that.
Great, thank you. As far as the site is concerned, does Mr. Lang know whether there is adequate water on the site to fight a fire? If it doesn't...
There is adequate water on the site, I'm not sure that a study has been done yet as to whether or not a fire pump will be required for the hotel, but the energy engineer for the hotel will address that.
And if it's required, a fire pump would be proposed?
Yes, and that would be typical, it would be unusual to do so.
Okay, and so, but it would be unusual, a pump order from, say, from Poplar Brook or from the bio-retention, that would be unusual, right?
And that's not proposed, the fire suppression here will be from the public water system.
Okay, staying with the hotel, where there's the largest concentration of people to be staying overnight in one facility, are there any plans for emergencies, access to the north of the hotel, I'm saying, oh, Poplar Brook? Is anything, your plan, do you hold the Poplar Brook at all?
No, there's nothing proposed crossing Poplar Brook.
I may have this from the wrong report, but he can answer some things from the EIS. There is an exit, a right-only exit to 35, you just mentioned a little bit ago. Why is it a right-only exit, and what purpose does it serve?
The traffic engineer will more fully describe it, you have two requirements for access.
You did testify that, testified about the landscape. Are you going to irrigate the landscape with well water from the site, or are you going to use town water?
Typically, we would do well water, but I'm not sure if that decision was made.
Okay, you're not concerned that it's polluted water? Nope, that was a comment. I'll give it to myself. You know, sir?
I thought it was a question. I was going to ask the answer.
So you know me, boy.
I think I can give a couple, Mr. Higgin.
Howlett?
Howlett?
Yes.
Sorry. Second T is silent.
First N and Dennis is silent, so it makes it confusing.
Yeah, all right.
You talked about native and non-native plants in the landscape. For those who may not know, why, why are you choosing non-native plants?
Some plants are particularly well-suited to, particularly in the commercial area where there's salt and other remains going on, so sometimes we use a non-native species that is particularly well-suited for that particular environment.
It's not for an aesthetic thing?
Well, it's part of the selection.
Okay.
Ms. Krimko, if I could go back to one of the prior questions, Chris, normally, we would listen to our professionals first, but because of complexity here, we decided to wait, but I just call your attention to the design waiver that you at least were asking in the beginning that relates to sprinklers. So Mr. Higgin's comment with regards to sprinkling landscape areas is that there should be an underground sprinkler system. So I don't know if you want to highlight what your position is on that now?
No, I think, I think that we did, I think when Jeremy answered the question, we will have irrigated as required by the ordinance, whether or not the irrigation is coming from well water or public water, we don't know that yet.
So are you officially...
Yes.
Taking that design waiver request out?
Stipulating that we will comply with that.
Did you mark that down, Jim?
Back again to non-native plants, are you an expert on plants, or would somebody else be able to testify there?
No, I'm not a landscape architect, I have some knowledge of being a site engineer, but I'm not a landscape architect.
Well, may I? Or you can get ready to slap me on this one.
No, I'm not going to slap you ever, but we do have a licensed tree expert who will testify as to the existing trees on site, and should you have questions with regard to the landscape, you can certainly pose it to him, but I will tell you, we're not introducing a landscape architect to detail the various species throughout the landscape areas. What we are going to do, which we do historically with all applications, is agree to work with the township planner as to the landscaping, so if there are species that are not preferable or are not desired by the township planner, we would hope that it would be subject to his review and approval.
I appreciate the stipulation on your part as well.
Correct.
I appreciate the commentary, that makes, that makes sense to me. One of the things I would hope that there would be consideration given to more native plants, because there's always consequences, native plants attract the right type of bugs, the right type of bugs attack the right type of birds, and on and on and on and on.
If, if the question is, will we consider that, the answer is yes.
And just for the record, I agree with that comment, and we'll work with the application.
I had a great answer that I was going to use to... Mr. Lang, you, your bio-retention plan is really impressive. I know Mr. Weinstein, or someone else on the board last time, asked about the cutting edge or the bleeding edge of this, and I know you probably put a lot of time into this. Have you implemented this bio-retention plan under a gas station at the other site?
Yes, we've done that before, it's like, recently got approved and break, we haven't started construction on that yet, but we've dealt with some of our situation there. But yes, we've done bio-retention systems at gas stations, and they're not just major, but they're commonly used.
I know the bio-retention system for years was unique, and the question that came up last time was whether those individual bio-retention things were interconnected, and I believe you said they were, and my question then, and I don't quite remember exactly how it turned out, is heaven forbid, there's a gasoline leak, then without this bio-retention basin that empties in the Poplar Brook, actually served aggravated the problem by spreading the flume larger and faster.
There are many safeguards for a spill on a gas station such as this. Wawa in particular actually exceeds the road regulations requirements, but any gas station has to meet all the state codes on this, so there are many spill prevention fail safes built into the design. There are also spill kits on site, employees are... Employees are trained to have a deal with spills. So it would be extremely unusual for a spill to even get to a bio-retention basin. But even if it did, the bio-retention basin would be a point of arrest for that. It has a storage capacity before it even begins to flood.
So you'd be able to segregate potentially the flow in one spot and release it or not release it into the brook?
No, it's not designed, I have design systems like that, but no activity like in a chemical plant or something. It's not designed for segregation, but by its very nature, it does segregate flumes. It's treating water quality. So your first drop out is, does not flood. There's no positive discharge immediately out of bio-retention basin.
I know the question, any questions about historic site became a little contentious. Are you aware that the Deal test site is a nationally recognized historic site?
Again, I've not done any historical study.
Right, I'm just asking if you're aware that it is and it's within the proximity of your site.
I'm not aware or not aware. I just haven't done any research in the background of the historical nature.
I lived in Ocean my whole life, up until recently, and I wasn't even aware, so.
Well, it is. Actually, it's registered, it's really quite a place, and you should, if you get a chance, take a look at it online. And the question, the reason I'm asking is a very specific question. Poplar Brook, which is right next to your site, flows through the Deal test site, which is a national historic site, and flows all the way up to the ocean. Amazingly enough, from your IIS, I found out that Poplar Brook is considered saline estuary, which was a shock to me, and that it actually supports warm fish life, which is also a shock to me, and I never ate anything that came out of there anyhow. But the question I'm asking is, you probably cannot answer this question since you didn't know it's a national historic site. There are certain specific protections that are afforded in those national historic sites. And this one is already registered. Will you, if you have not already done, give in every proportion that there will be no detrimental effect on your site on the national historic site?
So the jurisdiction for something like that is under arrest with the NJDP who coordinates with the Historic Preservation Office? So through the first law of permitting, that would be where the regulation of that comes from? And that is the final application?
I think I got that, okay? That's good enough. Can I ask one question? Oh, another landscaping question. Can trees drown?
Yes.
They can. So an excess of water might cause trees to drown?
Yes.
In your studies, you've already testified there's going to be more water coming off the site after this build than it is now in its natural state.
That's correct.
Are you aware of the health of the trees in Playa Park?
I am not.
I can't contest my own, can I? I'll do that by the way. Thank you very much. That's it. In the 1, 2, 3, 4, good quote there. That is part of your testimony, is that, huh?
It's part of my testimony regarding this particular variance, yes.
And it's only specific to this variance?
I'm sorry.
If it's only specific to this variance?
It may be true overall, but on slide 47, this is referring to Route 35 and Gilro Bumper variance.
So this is specific to promoting the economic vitality of the burns and not solid burns? That promotes the general welfare?
Yes.
So there's nothing in here that says you're promoting general welfare, except right there? So that is not fodder for us to question the use of the term general welfare?
If I, by way of background, one of the things that we're required to demonstrate in the statutory proofs for a variance, we don't have an obligation to prove that the development promotes the general welfare. We don't have an obligation to show that it is a detriment to the public welfare if it's being designed and proposed in accordance with the ordinance. The only time the impact on the general welfare comes in is when we're asking for variance relief. And one of the proofs for variance relief is demonstrating the positive criteria. In order to demonstrate the positive criteria, if we can show that it promotes the purposes of the municipal land use law, it is then considered to further or promote the general welfare, particularly with regard to subsection A. So whether the testimony was not that the project in its entirety promotes the general welfare, nor is that a proof on behalf of the applicant for permitted use. What I believe the testimony was in this particular slide was that this variance, by not requiring us to render the commercial invisible, promotes economic vitality, which therefore promotes the general welfare. And it was specific to not having a solid burner in front of the detail.
So those burns can be pretty impressive on water. Yes, okay, and you're the expert on that?
I'm certainly the expert as it relates to what proofs are required for the applicant to demonstrate to legally justify variance relief, yes.
I assume that the board acquiesces on that.
It's not a matter of acquiescing. It's whether or not the board attorney agrees as a fellow attorney.
Again, the concept right now is to ask questions of the expert. And he was the one who testified as a planner, principal planner licensed in the state of Jersey, as to the basis for why the board should consider what we call both frames under 455D-70. And Ms. Krimko is correct that for each variance that the board must consider, there must be positive criteria proven by the applicant as well as negative criteria. And it's true that each variance has to be supported by the purposes of the NLUL. We mentioned that again, municipal land use law, so before we called 55D-2, which Ms. Krimko was referring to. There are very specific purposes. And so what the planner was saying, he was in essence quoting. Now, last time, there were a fair number of questions as to why he said general welfare. I think, and there were so many questions that that's a completed subject factually. But that's the context, so Ms. Krimko is correct. And this board, practically every application that hears, does normally hear about the offer. So every member of the board is very cognizant. Most planners, you know, refer to the purposes. So that's why I'm saying, now whether or not the board wants to accept this testimony as promoting that particular purpose, that's up to the board's work, okay?
Great, thank you.
Sure.
I'm almost done. There was a study by the Army Corps of Engineers about Poplar Brook. It's dated, 2013. Are you aware of this study?
I have.
It's a question.
Not specifically, no.
Well, if I may, and yes, it was in the form of a question, but respectfully, I don't know that it was an appropriate question because this witness didn't testify as to any study. We didn't introduce any study. If this member of the public wishes to introduce the study to further some point in evidence, he can. And if I choose to put my witness up in order to challenge that, that's different. But at this point, I think reference to the study is inappropriate.
So really, the question is, was that study considered? The answer is no, I assume. And as said before by Ms. Krimko, and affirmed by the board, you will have the opportunity later on through yourself and possibly an expert to submit something of consideration by the board.
I do appreciate that. The only reason I'm bringing that up is because you brought up the DDP letter about the flood plan. And flood is the same word here. And that's why, because there was something supposed to be done in September of this year, and I don't know what the status of that is. Although, I was going to ask if you knew what the status of the witness revised report was.
I do not, but, okay.
And a small thing on page 53. This is a little picky, I'm sorry, bullets 3 and bullets 4. Benefits outweigh the detriments and can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Seems like a non-secular, but it will keep you there. If it has detriments that are not on the list, or I can't even parse that. They don't look yet.
Well, I will say, Ms. Krimko agreed, that's not exactly the language under subsection C, but I can tell you that I don't know why it's inserted there. It's supposed to come out of, perks, fair to say?
Yeah, and Mr. Hullett, first.
Howlett.
Let me just, if you want to, if you, Howlett, I'm sorry. You have my email address. If you want to email that study, I can pass it on and outside of the scope of the hearing, I can get you an answer as it relates to that study. You can take a look at it. That's point one. But point two, the statute, and I can rewrite from the statute, it effectively requires the applicant to demonstrate that there are no substantial detriments. And that the benefits outweigh the detriments. And this is all going to be part of closing argument and justification for the variances. And that the variance can be granted, and this is directly from the statute, I believe, without substantial detriment to the public good. So again, it's a legal question with regard to the way the statute is written and what the law requires us to demonstrate. And that is what the law requires us to demonstrate.
Yes, it's helpful. Generically, we call that a flexible C, C1. It's a balancing test. And Ms. Krimko, when I'm looking at the statute, it's accurate using the language. And that's the test this board has to consider in the end, when the proofs are in from the applicant.
But Mr. Howlett, just to be clear, that's only with regard to the variances being granted. This balancing test that's being done is only with regard to variances, not the project as a whole.
I realize that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, because some of the other questions were a little more globally applied.
I realize, I'm just doing that as a nitpicking.
I can hand you a copy of the statute to hold that during the break, if we have one.
May I ask, is the environmental impact study going to be open for questions to a witness tonight?
I do not have a witness tonight to address anything in the environmental impact study.
So Mr. Jamison and Dr. Walter, who did that study, is that correct? Is that the right people?
I think it was Ray Walker and Kevin Jamison. Is that what you said?
I said Jamison and Walker, but that's.
I thought you said a different name other than Walker. So, no, neither of them are here tonight.
Will they be here in the future?
I don't know, but certainly something that will take into consideration.
I wouldn't be surprised if there were some questions about that study.
Scott Sharp, I'd like to take a break at nine, but if you're going to be brief, you can proceed. We'll proceed with you. Just wait until Ms. Krimko get back.
I'm going to be asking Mr. Lang anyway, so I can go ahead. Scott Sharp. Two complainees. Scott Sharp, Guatemala. I guess, Mr. Lang, could you go back? Everybody likes chart 47. In fact, I'm the one that caused all the grief last week to have Ms. Krimko quoting things for me. So on general welfare, but I'm going to pass over that. Because I could not determine in your discussion and briefing is the second part of that, promoting economic vitality. How do you define that this project promotes economic vitality? And do you mean that for your applicant, the law of fast foods, restaurants and hotels, and the people it employs? Or are you talking about the township in general? Please define that.
So having proper view shed or site distance from the major highways with a commercial development is critical for its economic vitality. As a planner, as a land development engineer, I've seen a number of different shopping centers constructed both ways. And there's definitely a strong correlation with economic success and visibility from the main highway.
So you're talking about the variance to encourage economic vitality for the owners of the businesses of this development? And not necessarily, you're not relating that to the economic vitality of the community?
The application before the board this evening is for this particular shopping center. And yes, this variance relates directly to this particular shopping center.
Okay, I hope everybody heard that. Okay, back to, and my last question is related to the question that was raised before regarding the amount of fill that you're going to bring in in order to, for the variance on exceeding the 2% slope. Or you got seven and a half feet that you're going to raise the area that abuts the Poplar Brook behind the hotel, is that correct?
At the northeast corner of the hotel, yes. The maximum amount of fill into the hotel is about seven and a half.
Do you have a profile view of the slope of the entire site that shows how that amount of fill is going to be applied to the entire work site? From the peak that's at the top, you said you wanted it to be kind of flat, makes it easier for parking and whatever. But then I heard the seven and a half feet. And do you have something that describes where all that is going to be? And also, for the area where you do the seven and a half feet rise, how do you keep erosion from that just running off? Is there going to be a retaining wall? Or how will you protect Poplar Brook from this seven and a half foot rise?
So the grading plan picks degrading on the entire site and is externally detailed. So every aspect of the site or work is codified and graded by. There is a retaining wall proposed to retain that slope. We would be meeting all the service and assembly control standards.
A grading plan, is that a publicly available document? And is it such what the, and this is probably not for you, but for the township, if it's publicly available, when can I obtain a copy of that?
It's been on file for quite a while. I'm not sure how you-
On file in Mr. Kirk's office? I've been there about a dozen times, and most of the time, I can't get the information that I'm looking for. So do you have-
That's incorrect. You've received all the information the board asked for.
That's incorrect. I can bring my OPR request, and so, anyway, that's another subject. And I don't want to encumber Mr. Lang. But there is a question here that if I come to the township hall, do I submit another OPR request to obtain this, what do you call it, a grade plan?
Rating plan.
Okay.
Would you specify where it is in the documents that you filed? The page number or the map number?
So it's Plan Sheets 8 through 12.
I'm sorry?
Plan Sheets 8 through 12.
So you submitted, in essence, a site plan set of documents, is that fair to say?
Yes.
And what you're referring to are some of the pages that are part of that multi-page document, is that fair to say?
Yes.
Scott, would you like it emailed to you?
No, I wouldn't. I'd like to get, if it's publicly available, I really want to get it from the township. They have a- They have a responsibility to the public to be responsible, so I think I'd like to use the township process, and me or anyone else in this room or anywhere can obtain it through the township.
Ms. Sharp, this is a side comment, but Ms. Krimko is actually offering to send it to you. You can, you can look down there, but.
The reason being that it's large, it's 24 by 36, so the tangent, the tangent, what I have to send it out to have a copy.
I will be happy to look at it at the township. That's where I've looked at all the large things, I spread them out on that workspace or put it on the floor, which is the only space that's available, so I'll be glad to go do that. I just want to know that when I get there, what I'm looking for, and that it can be retrieved without a lot of delay.
And that's why I wanted to be specific, to guide you to where it is, and also to suggest that if you want to actually have it physically in your hand, Ms. Krimko is offering something that's not per se necessary, but it's, so you can have it there and not just look at it.
I'm one person, anybody can get it at the township, I believe, is what I'm asking. Is that, is that not true, Mr. Brown?
Pursuant to the regular procedure, you can look at the documents that you find.
I can look at it there, but, or do I have to submit an OPR?
No.
Right now, the questions are supposed to go to the witness. If you have any concerns, you can talk to me on the side.
I'll be glad to do that. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to take a break, as I previously hinted. I want to go to the start of the hearing. Mr. Lang, I believe we have a question here to hear.
I think you have to call all again, Mr. Sharp. Mr. Chair, Mr. Brody.
Here.
Dr. Di Benedetto.
Here.
Mr. Tefelia.
Here.
Mr. Duffy. Chairman Good. Ms. Close.
Here.
Mr. Levy.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Mr. Weinstein.
Here.
Chairman Burley.
Here.
Congressman Loal reminds me, for those of you who were here last time, there are a fair number of people who were not here tonight, who were not at the last meeting, because they're disqualified for various reasons. I think the only exception was John, and whether he's going to listen to the tape and be here next time. We don't know yet, but presumably he'll be back next time.
Just to remind you, you can question the witness regarding his testimony with no commentary regarding a particular issue that you like or not. Thank you.
Bonnie Zimmerman, Wanda Massa. Just a couple of questions. You talked about, I want to point, I know you're not the trade expert, you talked about younger trees because they can root better than trying to transplant bigger trees. Will there be trees, and I know you're not a trade expert, you might tell me to break for that, but will there be trees that are deer resistant? And once the deer are seeking food because they don't have the trees and stuff that were naturally there, will there be something in place to replace those trees once they're eaten by all the deer? Once the project is done?
Without speaking to them being eaten by deer, there is a performance and a maintenance bond for landscaping, so there'll be a mechanism, there's mortality, there's a mechanism to deal with that. In terms of deer resistance, no, I'm not an expert on that, so I'm going to defer to our trade expert.
What study or report will address the following questions? You talked about the higher level of salts being on the property because you have black top versus trees, so will there be plants that can handle a higher, higher level of snow products? And how will that level of salt and other snow melting product run off from the pavement versus the natural environment affect the quality of concrete growth in the surrounding areas?
So, two separate answers there. The landscaping plan was developed with full understanding of the setting and context, so all the plant species selected were selected to be appropriate for their proposed locations. In terms of water quality, we met and actually exceeded the state's water quality requirements with the myriad stormwater facilities I had previously described.
And that takes into account the additional products of milk and insect?
Yes, it takes into account water quality general, so whether it's salts or suspended solids or nutrients, all those things are inherently handled by the water quality proposed, and in fact, here, because we're using green infrastructure, it actually does that much better than traditional rain infrastructure.
Okay, please. And is there direct access from the property, I couldn't tell from the maps, from the property to Playa Park without going out to the library?
There's direct access to the shared parking lot between the library and museum, which accesses the rest of the park.
Okay, so does that, so then is that true that the more local park will become more of a transient park with people staying in hotels, stuff using it versus just the local people?
I didn't present any testimony in that regard, and I don't believe that would be true.
So, people in the hotel really won't have access or use the park?
They would have access to the park, it's a public park, but the hotel has its own recreational amenities.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Rosemary Fiori, Oak Tree Lane and Ocean.
Who's her listing?
F-I-O-R-E. I have two topics I wanted to ask questions on. The first is, you had referenced a DEP study that was going on in parallel right now, could you tell me, could you explain to me a little bit more about that?
There's a freshwater wetland permit application pending, and as part of that, there are various studies going on, including your story.
And will that, results of that be taken into consideration with your project?
The N of D E P will consider that in issuing the freshwater wetland permits.
Okay, and could you put up your picture of where you were going to put the community center?
Are you referring to the community garden?
Not the community garden, I'm sorry, it was like a gazebo or, I'm not sure exactly what it was, but a gathering place.
Yes, immediately west of the proposed retail.
So, for the, what community are you referring to in that?
It would be the community in the shopping center, in the adjacent townhouse community, so people that are at the shopping center, they want to take a break in the middle of the day, sit down and just rest, or if they want to eat something from Wawa, which is located in close proximity, there will be an opportunity to do that.
Okay, so that's not really, that's not so much for the residential community, that's more for the commercial community?
It's open to the residential community, but I would envision it being used more by the commercial users.
And the community gardens, how are you going to prevent, that, that is for the residential community, correct?
Correct.
And how are you going to prevent people from the commercial going into the community garden?
Typically, the community garden will have a lock gate on it, there'll have to be some kind of shared access. Those details haven't been worked out yet, but the homeowners association will figure out how or if it's necessary to secure.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can we take the ladies over here, please?
I have the one picture that you just had up. Joy Solvo, Dioro. A question, how do you move a well? You said you were going to move the well. Do you have to dig down to the well, or are you just moving the surface part of the well?
I would envision moving the surface, superficial portion.
So, what happens to the well itself?
The well is going to be capped.
Which is that? My second question is, way a hundred hours ago, you had said that you would have an entrance on Logan and Dior Road for the trucks, deliveries.
No, not dedicated, that all the entrances are open to either vehicle and pedestrians, passenger vehicles or truck traffic servicing.
Right, so you're saying they would be on Dior Road and Logan for truck entrance? Did anyone take into consideration what the tonnage for Dior Road or Logan is for trucks? I was told it was four tons? It should be the normal traffic weight on those two roads. The normal traffic weight for one or two deliveries, yes, you can bring a truck down, but for constant deliveries to a mall, to restaurants, to a gas station, fuel, but did anyone take into consideration the weight of the road?
The traffic engineer will drive all sites or police.
Okay, and my third question is for the access into the library. Why do you even need a road to access into the library?
It's an ordinance requirement.
Couldn't even say, even if you would think a double entrance, I can think of the safety of children that are using the library, I think it's kind of a safe, did it go and tend to kind of study a safety of having two entrances in regards to one?
Your comments are, can be saved to the end, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith, I see you're back for some more questions.
Yeah, just had a question, one more thing about the parking. Could you show me, or is there a plan, like, delivery trucks for where they're going to park when delivering products to Wawa or Chick-fil-A? Are there designated areas?
There are, and I did show those as I went over each of the sites.
Okay, and then the other question I had in regards to the, we were just talking about snow and ice or salt, where, do we have designated areas where snow will be removed and stored on these, on these plans at all?
No, they're not designated areas.
Do we, I know you've talked about parking and adequate spaces, is this being factored in that we are in New Jersey and we do get large snowfall, that, you know, parking could be removed with amounts of snow?
This is no different than any other commercial shopping center throughout New Jersey, and the snow is handled, it's either in the excess parking stalls, it's on the islands, it's handled in a variety of ways, but it would be very typical of the operation of any shopping center in New Jersey.
So, there's no designated areas?
Correct.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Before you proceed, there's a lady behind you, but she, she has a spot, and I have something else in mind. Thank you.
I thank you, Maryam Conway, I live on Melville Street, we're adjacent and parallel to town shops. And my first question is, how far north did you look at the water table from the proposed site?
Our geotechnical investigation was limited to the proposed site.
Okay, are you, are you aware of these existing flooding problem that I have, since I've lived there for 31 years, and I speak on behalf of my whole family, including my husband, who's working tonight?
I'm not aware of a specific flooding problem that you have.
Okay, this problem was caused by a pond that was originally there.
Chair, I have to object. The testimony is specific with regard to what we're doing on our site.
Okay.
If there's a question with regard to the engineering on our site, that's what we're going to answer.
Sure, okay. When you clear over 20 acres of land and you start to dig, how, when, where do you expect the water table to be?
The factors by location throughout the site and is detailed in the geotechnical study.
Okay, since we're in the, in the neighborhood, we're just north of where the property is, when we first moved there 31 years ago, there were trees next to us. They knocked the trees down and went to build the house and found water immediately.
Ma'am?
Okay.
You can't, you just have to ask questions concerning Mr. Lang's testimony, okay? You'll have an opportunity to do this at the end of the, end of the hearing.
Well, I think it's, I think it's pertinent.
Yes, but you can say it at the end of the hearing.
Okay, how far deep do you have to dig for the cellar for the hotel and for the gas tanks?
What's the problem with the hotel, ma'am? I don't get those testimony when you go to a cellar in a hotel.
Well, I'm just thinking that you're going to have to raise, you're going to have to bring in dirt and raise.
Again, if there's nothing on the record that indicates a cellar in the hotel, there hasn't been any testimony to that effect at all. There is an architect who testified at the hotels, and there's still the question, if he presents testimony that there's a cellar, you're certainly going to ask him that.
Okay, have you considered that when you raise the land, that there's going to be runoff to the surrounding properties?
We've considered the change in runoff that will result in the damage.
In regards to being adjacent to the property, where would the dumpsters be placed?
The dumpsters are varied by location, location, I did previously testify to those locations.
And what time of day are those dumpsters going to be emptied?
That'll vary by end user.
Okay, is there any ordinance that they can be emptied in the middle of the night?
I'm not sure if there's a specific ordinance in town, but there is a state noise code, and that would have to be met, and there's different standards, there's a day and a night standard.
Okay, because that's very disruptive when that happens in the middle of the night?
Ms. Krimko, are you going to offer any stipulations as to this issue?
The stipulation I'll offer is that we'll comply with the ordinance and we'll comply with any state regulations.
How about 18-wheelers that are going to be delivering products? When will they be coming in?
Same answer will vary by end user.
Do you anticipate any problem with drainage from Route 35 and, and the property onto the surrounding property and Playa Park?
I do not.
Is that based on looking at down the road? Or is that just based on looking at your specific property?
It's based on looking at our specific property and the adjacent stormwater facilities at 35 that are affected by our problem.
So, my concern is that you need to look down the road just a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, in the interest of fairness, I'd like to hear from everybody from Ocean Township first, and then get to the people that are not from Ocean Township. So, at this point, I don't want to take a repetitive objective at this time. I'm telling you, Ms., you already questioned, you already had some questions. I'd like the gentleman behind you to proceed if he's from Ocean Township, and if he's not the last one, then more people from Ocean Township. But when the last person from Ocean Township presents their questions, then people from out of town can present theirs, and then you will have another opportunity if you wish.
David Winer, 1216 Walnut Avenue, Wanda Moss. Point of order to the chair. I've heard tonight, over and over, that the questions are only to go to the expert witnesses, is that correct?
Through Mr. Lang, yes. Through his testimony.
And then may I ask respectfully why counsel has been opining throughout this meeting? Right, I can see where she could object to certain procedural aspects.
She's working there, she's a client.
Is she testifying?
No, she's not.
Has she been sworn in to testify?
As a member of the bar, I am, it's not necessary to have me sworn in the law. And number two, I am the representative of the advocate, I'm presenting the case, I am entitled to participate in the hearing and offer comments to the board as it relates to the case, and certainly make comments as to the legal efficacy for the legal requirements, which many of the questions were with regard to.
I agree with the latter part, in terms of the legal efficacy, but as far as the actual testimony on the questions, that's not your role, is it?
No, there's no testimony being offered by me. I've only been, I've only been summarizing testimony that was previously given in an effort to move this along to get to the next witness. I have not offered any testimony on my own.
And what rules and regulations exist that govern the way this meeting is being recorded?
Well, first of all, we are still asking questions of the witness, but Ms. Krimko did make some responses. It could be the case that Ms. Krimko didn't say anything, and Mr. Lang was the only one to testify to. You know, whether or not the board feels that Ms. Krimko, you know, added something that was beyond what Mr. Lang was going to say, in terms of testimony alone, and the board can discern that. Now, in terms of whether or not she's trying to expedite this, we've heard at times that she was referring to other witnesses, that helps the process. Ms. Krimko should not answer questions that are fact. Ms. Crimco should not answer questions that are actually asked of Ms. Crimco.
And my question regarding the component of this meeting, what rules and regulations exist to allow this board to limit questions to, to just the witness? All this procedure, where is this memorial place? Because I looked on the website, it's not there. I also looked at the state regulations governing planning boards of municipalities, I don't see that either.
Well, all I will say, because we really can't go into, you know, everything that the board does. However, I will say that the board has the ability to set the procedure. We are guided by the statute, there's nothing in the statute, for example, that indicates that people are necessarily restricted to two and a half minutes, for example. You haven't heard that at all.
Excuse me, yes, it says in the site, I'd like you to define that.
Sir, we're not gonna have an argument here, we're not gonna have this kind of, I'm gonna try to answer your question, but never gonna move on. Because if you want to talk, you know, to me on the side, I'd be happy to do that. But this is the point in time where we're asking questions. We're not gonna have, there's no point of order, really, that, that is to be involved. But as a courtesy, I'm gonna tell you generally what we do here every meeting. The board has a process and we've announced it many, many times. And in terms of, if your question is, why are we gonna have the people from the township to testify first? Well, or why are we gonna have people from outside of the township to testify later? I mean, that is up to the discretion of the board chair, okay?
I'll ask my other questions later, thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
So, is this, I didn't catch you in there.
What did I say?
Oh, okay. Are there any other people from Ocean Township that I'd like to ask a question to who have not asked a question yet tonight? Then why don't you proceed to the microphone? I would like to do it in that manner so I get to the people from out of town.
But she's not from out of town.
You know, she's a spokesperson.
I like to hear, although she has some good questions.
Okay, but we have to have someone's authority, come on.
No, I just didn't see any other people standing up. Anyway, Jackie Wenzel, 610 Deal Road. Yeah, I just, I had wanted to ask about the flooding and the consideration in terms of the mountain parking lot. And you were speaking earlier on one of the sketches, sorry, I didn't get what page it was, where we were talking about decorative cement that were gonna be walkways. If you want to pull that sheet up. Anyway, I guess it doesn't matter, there's clearly parking lot and walkways throughout the, many of the diagrams of the site. But there is an awful lot of water up there and I know we're not having a flood expert here tonight, right? I mean, will there be someone that we're gonna discuss the water?
Jackie, could you ask a question, please, of the witness?
Are we going to have any pervious ground cover that's going to replace the soil and the roots of the trees and the canopy of the trees and all the places that water typically is absorbed and, and absorbed by the trees, absorbed by the leaves, the water that doesn't even hit the ground because of the canopy? There is an awful lot of water and I live on Deal Road and right now, we are experiencing a lot of extra water.
A question, Jackie, please, because...
Is there been any consideration, what is the consideration for the water that would normally be in the soil and into the trees, where is that water going?
I have offered extensive testimony as to the proposed stormwater management system and it needs to exceed all the applicable requirements.
But what are the applicable requirements?
Mr. Chair, it would take 65 hearings
I understand.
For my expert to recite the DEP regulatory controls over stormwater management or the board and the ordinance controls. The applicant put forth a lengthy discussion with regard to how we're handling stormwater. Now, testimony, we're not here to give a primer on what the rules and regulations are.
I remember Mr. Lang giving the full discussion on stormwater management last meeting and even, I believe, the first meeting, we saw something in, regarding a very, there was one portion that strikes me that were, there was a very involved, rather new methodology used in one section, in one area. And he gave a very fine rendition of how that was going to be accomplished. And he was even questioned on the fact that was that new? And was he confident that it would accomplish what he wanted it to? He was more than confident that it would.
So why wouldn't we have pervious ground cover instead of cement in such a wet area?
That's a question.
First of all, I wouldn't consider this such a wet area. Secondly, we do have forest concrete and, excuse me, forest pavement on certain locations, but we have a number of stormwater techniques proposed that will meet and exceed the stormwater requirements.
And you can't tell me then this evening I have to look on the tape, is that what you're telling the chairman? I'm not entitled to hear the answer to that question this evening because I missed that other meeting?
Your question is?
What, what, what is, is going to be done in terms of handling the water?
Yes, and I would, I would state that we are not going to repeat the testimony that took two hours and a party meeting.
We're initially repetitive, Jackie, I mean...
So you're telling me I have to look at it on the film?
This witness was kind enough to outline that in the first meeting and the second meeting.
It's a very big concern, I don't think it's kind, I think that's his job. I think it's, that he's here to sell a project, project. I think it's much more of a burden on us because it's invading our space.
I have a objection on the record. Jackie, Ms. Wenzel will be free to offer whatever comments she wants at the end. I would ask you to limit it to questions. If you'd like, I'm happy to email you the transcripts of the meeting if you'd like to read them instead of watching the tape. We do have the transcript. However, I'm not going to repeat the testimony here at length for those members of the public who weren't able to attend.
Well, I don't think Mr. Lang is familiar enough with the property, with the area.
I have to object, she's offering testimony to the board.
Okay, you're offering your opinion and you're not supposed to do that, just commentary on Mr. Lang's testimony.
Mr. Lang, have, because Deal Road is part of this property, I live on Deal Road, there is water running down Deal Road, have you seen it?
I've seen stormwater on Deal Road.
So what you're proposing to control the water by placing so much pervious ground cover on that property, will that take care of the water that's running down Deal Road today?
No, we're not proposing to address existing stormwater runoff from Deal Road. We are controlling runoff from our project, which does, some of which does discharge Deal Road and that discharge is fully conformal.
So can you understand why it would be my concern on Deal Road that all this water is there now whilst there is soil and trees and a root, a root system? Can you understand why I would be concerned?
Mr., as an expert, it's not as, his understanding of your concern, is there a specific question to something he testified to?
I'm trying to be very specific. There is a river running in front of my house, a little river, that comes out of this street right now.
This type of a question needs to be addressed at the end of the hearing.
But the end is the end.
And I know what you're, so...
If I may, the testimony...
Just ask a question regarding Mr. Lang's testimony.
Well, it was, it's the concrete that he's putting around, I have a question on it and I did ask it and I don't feel it was really fully answered.
Let's ask it if he knew about the river that runs in front of your house.
I asked him, well, because if he's still in a study on Deal Road, I'm on Deal Road, I'm steps away from the site.
The testimony that the witness put in was that we are not going to have any effect on the current drainage on Deal Road. We are only addressing the drainage as it relates to our site.
But I think the water's coming from your site today. Do you, are you aware of that?
I'm aware of the existing site runoff that occurs on the property.
So you're aware that it comes down Deal Road?
A portion of the site drains to Deal Road, yes.
So with more, with more impervious ground cover, do you feel we will have more water?
We are, as demonstrated in testimony and is fully detailed in our stormwater report, we are meeting all the applicable requirements with regard to discharge of stormwater to Deal Road and globally on the whole site.
Okay, my next question is, the salt that you talked about on the parking lot, is that gonna be a chemical salt or an organic type of substance? Because it is going into the ocean, because it'll eventually go to Popular Brook, which will drain into the ocean. So what type of chemical are you going to use?
I'm not gonna use any kind of chemical. There would be a landscape maintenance or a snow maintenance contractor that would be engaged.
You mentioned salt, so I was wondering what kind of salt would be used?
The witness just answered. This salt or whatever is used would be employed by whoever is taking care of the landscape and has nothing to do with this testimony.
Okay, all right, I have another question. Earlier, you talked about the Marriott Hotel. It was a question, actually, the board had asked about some consideration of moving it in a bit, a little further in, because it's really, you know, everyone in that neighborhood obviously walk.
I didn't ask that.
No, but you didn't say you...
Basically about trying to protect the surrounding people who live there.
That's what I meant.
So wouldn't it be nice with that?
I understand, that's what I was saying, what did I, what did you think?
Yeah, that was sort of about whether there are trees or something to figure out that.
And they said no? What did you say? Because I thought they said that it was meeting the ordinance requirements, but they weren't going to do...
If there's a question for my witness, I would ask her to ask it, not have a call...
Please ask a question, Jackie, you're, you're broad grudging, it's all there.
Well, the 240, I don't know, I'm just trying to follow what, how this meeting's been going along. And in the beginning, the question I thought you had asked was there gonna be a consideration to the neighborhood that's going to be looking at the back of the Marriott? And that things went from being a 240 to 260.
Okay, so what is your question?
My question is, I understand that it may not be required, it may not be required, that they do anything to buffer a bit more of the neighborhood. It meets all the standards, as Mrs. Crimco had stated. But I guess because this, we feel a bit invaded by this project, even if it doesn't meet requirements, is there a sense of consideration just on being a good neighbor and saying, you know, we have a lot of parking lot here, we can kind of move that Marriott in a little bit more? So people aren't staring at it and they're not listening to the air conditioning and all of this?
This was answered previously, Jackie. Ms. Crimco answered it as well.
Well, she just said she didn't have to do it.
No, 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 she was saying what the, the proposed plan is within the confines of the ordinance.
And there was testimony by Jeremy at the last meeting and tonight that we are proposing an evergreen row behind the building. And then there was a question from the wife of the gentleman who brought it up the first time as to whether or not we would consider putting in taller trees or if they could have input. And we agreed to meet with them off-site to discuss it.
And Jackie, there's also a row of very tall pine trees there that have to be inspected to see if they're in the flood plain or not the flood plain, if they can be preserved, what condition they're in.
No, I know, I spoke to the tree man who was spray painting trees the other day and he said...
I have to object, okay. Mr. Chairman, I have to object. Because Jackie appears at a lot of these meetings, you recognize that you, let me direct it to the board. According to the municipal news law, specifically 4055 D-10, it is the municipal agency who makes the rules governing the hearings. The board has established rules at the beginning of the hearing, you read them in as to the process. It's the same process that this board and the zoning board has employed for 20 years, which is as long as I've been practicing and coming before this board. That has always been, the applicant presents their case, they present witnesses. There are questions asked of the witness, there's cross-examination of the witness. When our case concludes, the public has a chance to comment. I would ask that you please ask whoever witnesses or the public come up that they refrain from offering comments or commentary and limit it to solely questions of my witness, not of the board, not of the board's professionals, of my witness, because that's the process that you put in place at the beginning of this hearing and every other hearing in Ocean Township.
I agree entirely with you, but I must say, I've been instructing these objectors or questioners and they refuse to comply with the rules.
Now, I have another question. Well, I'm trying, I'm opposing your question because it's important, because it's important for the people.
You have to follow the rules, Jackie, so if you don't have a question specifically for the witness...
I do have another question.
Now, a question that you can get to in a succinct manner, you should sit down.
I have another question. So with the well, an artisan well that you're going to move, what happens to the water there? What do you do, do you fill the well? Does it get filled with...
Mr. Chairman, a question was asked and answered by a prior witness.
It's going to be capped, somebody just asked that question.
No, it's not gonna be capped, what does that mean? Is, what happens to the water? I don't understand what that means, what does it mean when it's capped?
At the moment, it's an artesian well, not an artisan well, just to be clear. And to be capped, yes, it will be filled.
Okay, and then when you move it, will it be, are you gonna create another bigger well?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pogels, nice to see you here, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Lang, have you been on site yet, have you walked it? He's just mentioned my name.
She's doing a transcript, she's doing a transcript of the hearing, so she has to take it down.
Okay, Ray Bogus, want to add, Walnut House. Mr. Lang, have you walked the site?
Yes.
Okay, have you walked near Popular Brook in between?
Yes.
So you're familiar with the wetland separation? The wetland delineation, I should say?
Yes, I'm familiar with the wetland delineation.
Okay, very good. You mentioned artesian well, we just mentioned that. The definition of artesian, does that mean that water is under pressure? When you hit water, when you hit the water table, it'll rise?
Yes.
Okay, do you find that to be problematic in the development of this site, potentially?
We have studied the geotechnical property site-wide and have designed the site towards with those properties.
Okay, I'd like to switch gears here to the residential and commercial site that we first began with.
The subdivision one, was it called?
Yeah, the one between the residential and fast food. I think it was the first question asked. Either way, you, I think you stated that it would be about 112 feet between the residential and the commercial fast food restaurant? Is that what you, I think you stated?
It's not a fast food, it is a restaurant, it's not a fast food restaurant.
But still a restaurant?
Yes.
So when they do cook, there'll be emissions of, emissions coming out of that restaurant?
Yes.
Okay, do you have any concerns with the emissions affecting the residents?
You're talking about the cooking from the, the kitchen, no?
The odor, the odor issues?
No.
Okay, so you have no issues with the odor ordinance, or nuisances, rather, that they may be falling in that direction?
No.
Okay, and in your experience, you, you've had developments that were this close with residents and restaurants and had no issues?
Yes, and I've done mixed-use developments where the residential's literally on top of the restaurants.
Okay, but it's enclosed, I'm sorry, it's enclosed but not downwind. What I'm saying is that, in a particular case like this, if you're emitting emissions from the food on a summer day and the other window is open, you're not concerned that that may create a nuisance or events where the people may complain?
No, I'm not concerned about that.
Okay, very good, just wanted to put it out there, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just for clarification, Peter, ma'am, I know you're standing there, but after the last person from Ocean Township questions this witness, I'm gonna take questions from people from outside of township. If you want to continue standing, that's up to you.
She's from Ocean Township.
I have my position here.
I'm just trying to determine...
Regarding the statement, though, I was wondering if Chairman Varelli, whether he could be... Peter Jungkun, 610 Deal Road.
Could you just spell that for the...
I was gonna ask Chairman Varelli if I could have the same accommodation as everyone else here. Can I get a chair and sit down rather than stand?
I feel like...
Thank you.
Don't forget the mic.
Okay, can you hear me? All right, I'd like to go back, I guess, to Mr. Lang's testimony on February 25th. And my first question has to go with the letter from Mr. Fitzgerald about, maybe it had to do with storm water management. It wasn't clear what date that letter was received by you. Can you tell me the date that the Fitzgerald letter was received?
I can tell you the date it was, that it dated.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the relevance of this is as it relates to his testimony.
He testified to a letter. I was trying to...
No, he's not testifying to a letter. You're asking a question about the board engineer's review letter and when the applicant received it, I'm not sure it's relevant to the testimony that he offered you.
Mr. Varely, what do you think?
Well, if you're going to ask a question where he referred to the letter, I'll let you proceed, but if you're not there, I don't know where you're going with this, sir.
Right. They're questioning the letter that Mr. Lang referred to from Mr. Fitzgerald. They just want the date of the...
The date, the date of the letter?
Yes.
Oh, well, you've been there since.
January 25th.
January 25th, 2019.
Part of the package.
Thank you, that...
No, there's a more recent letter. February 7th, there's a...
You were referring to February 25th, is that...
That's correct.
In, in the package, it was marked for, actually, that there is a report from Mr. Fitzgerald dated January 25th, 2019. So your question doesn't relate to any point in time answer, is that fair to say?
That's correct. That's all I was trying to ask. Okay, also, I'm just going to continue with January 25th testimony. You testify, Mr. Lang?
Excuse me, yeah, Peter. January 25th testimony?
Oh, I'm sorry, February 25th testimony. Thank you for that question. Mr. Lang, you testified that there was no playground. Is that correct?
We have a top lot, but the, in between restaurants, B and the town hall and community. But that's the extent that we have in terms of a playground.
Are you referring to the top lot diagram that was introduced tonight?
Yes.
Okay. But my question wasn't February 25th. You testified that there was no top lot or playground, is that correct?
At that time, we only had an area reserved for it on the plans. We did not have a specific piece of equipment. We have since added or identified a specific piece of equipment.
Okay, thank you. Also on the February 25th, there was a reference to, I don't know if this is a question of your testimony or whether Chairman Varely or Chairman Brown correct me, but there was reference to another ordinance regarding a 260-foot buffer being required. Not a 240-foot buffer. And I believe Dan, what is his name, he had a number for that ordinance.
2307.
That's right, 2307. Do, do what you submitted, the drawings, your application that you submitted, do they comply with the 260-foot buffer?
As I previously testified, yes.
Thank you.
And it's not a buffer, it's a setback.
Just, yeah, just to clarify, I was going to say it's a setback, it's not a buffer.
Thank you for that clarification. You spoke again on the February 25th about your bio-retention system and how that recharges. I guess the question I had is, does it do anything in terms of your calculations as to runoff? Is recharge different than runoff?
Recharge is different than runoff, but as I have previously testified, infiltration was ignored in our routing, so we meet the requirements without accounting for infiltration.
Thank you. When you, your basis of design, you testified, has to do with state requirements. I believe the Township of Ocean has a 2009 storm water management plan. I didn't hear any testimony as to compliance with the Township's storm water management plan.
The storm water... Excuse me. There's been a particular request to have a five-minute recess for personal reasons. If you want to buy that, so we'll look back in five minutes, okay? And what time is it? I can't read the... 10:10, so is the anticipation that the applicant will receive through the left block today?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Varely? Dr. Togadado?
Here.
Mr. Tofelia?
Here.
Mr. Duffy? Chairman Wood? Ms. Close? Mr. Beebe? Mr. Sienna?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Chairman Varely?
Here. Peter, you can proceed with your questions to the witness.
Although, before I get back to my questions, is everybody okay? There was a health break, I think was what you said?
Let's proceed with the questions.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to go back again to February 25th. I believe there was a testimony by Mr. Lang about the buffer, the solid buffer variance on Route 35. And you had said that you thought that that somehow would cause blight. And my question is, to put that in context, not far from that corner, there's, I believe, a BJ's on the opposite side.
I have to object, the application is marked to this property. The question should be limited to this property.
How do you define blight?
Blight would be the lack of economic vitality.
How does a buffer specifically create blight on your site?
Commercial uses need visibility to be economically successful. This is well-understood. And the proposed buffer, which we've already gone over in prior testimony, was not, it was a mistake, was not meant to buffer Route 35. And there's a small portion of the old road or Restaurant A is having a solid buffer and those not having visibility to the roads that are proximate to would definitely adversely impact those businesses and the ability for those businesses to remain vital over a period of time.
And why do you call it a mistake when that was part of the ordinance? And why is that a mistake?
Mr. Chair, this question was asked numerous times and I believe that the board planner is the one who provided the testimony as to the draft of the ordinance and how that portion was inadvertently left in as it relates to 35. This was not something that our...
Can we move on to the next question, Peter?
Is there a letter from Mr. Higgins on...
There was testimony from Mr. Higgins on the record.
I think there was also testimony that there was a March 3rd letter from Mr. Higgins.
Oh, I thought you meant to refer to that issue.
I believe there was on that issue.
There's a report, it's reported by Mr. Higgins, which is part of the record.
Yes, there is a March 3rd letter.
And is it offer some sort of explanatory statement as to why that was a mistake?
Again, my witness...
This is testified to last time, Mr. Higgins talked about it.
But again, this isn't, this isn't a question-answer period for Mr. Higgins or Mr. Higgins' letter. This is questions as to what Mr. Lang has testified to.
I can only ask questions about testimony. I can't talk about any points of order. Chairman Varely?
Correct, sir.
Am I to conduct myself in accordance with the Township of Ocean rules for planning boards? And I can't ask, I can't ask questions of the board? Is that rules?
No, you can't ask, ask questions of the board. You can ask questions of the witness. That's the point we're in.
What if I'm not certain exactly as to how to ask questions? And why ask the board for some instruction as to the rules? I cannot ask that.
No, try to ask. You've been here, lots of people ask questions. Kindly just try and ask your questions of the witness. That's where we are right now.
Will there be time later to talk about points of order if I have any question about that?
Mr. Chairman, this appears to me to be grandstanding in an effort to delay this. I'm not sure if that's the intent, but it's certainly coming across that way. There was a public portion of this hearing at which time Mr. John Cusman, everybody else who would like to will be sworn in and can present, could ask questions. At this point, it's cross-examination of this witness. I'd ask him to continue, and I would also ask that the board add whatever time he's spending delaying this matter to be added at the end of the hearing.
I dispute...
Please do ask a question, sir.
That's legal interpretation, disputed, not in dispute.
If you don't have a question, I'm going to ask you to take a seat in the audience.
Yes, I do have similar questions, thank you. Mr. Lang testified that the canopy variance is larger than permitted. But I don't think he testified actually how much larger than permitted it is. Do we have a size larger than Mr. Lang?
There was no testimony as to the size of the canopy. There was testimony as to the setback from Route 35. There is no regulation as to the size of the canopy. And there wasn't...
And just for clarification, I think we're talking about the Chick-fil-A or the fast food restaurant canopy, not the gas station canopy.
And again, there was a slide, and this is a repeated question. There was a slide, it was up, it was handed out. It specifically referenced the distance provided and the distance required.
I was trying to ask a question about testimony, but I didn't get an answer. I was going to ask, I did not hear any testimony, maybe I can't ask a question of Mr. Lang, but it has to do with, I guess, managing storm water during construction. Is there going to be any testimony as to how you're managing water on the site during construction?
The Soil Horizon Sentiment Control regulations cover that. The plans have a full Soil Horizon Sentiment Control plan, and that is reviewed by the Soil Horizon Sentiment Control District.
And it's overseeing whether it is heavily as well, correct?
Yes, as part of the municipal inspection, yes.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go to, I guess, your testimony from three, March 4th. I believe there was some testimony or maybe some summarizing by applicant's attorney as to completeness of letter that was received, but I didn't see any introduction of that as evidence or the date of...
What letter are you referring to, sir?
A letter from, I guess it comes from Mr. Kirk.
No, there was, it was not at the meeting on the 4th, I believe. It was at the meeting on the 25th. It was a question as to completeness. I indicated that a completeness letter was issued by Mr. Kirk's office. I did not move it into evidence. However, I imagine that if an open request is filed, it can be obtained from Mr. Kirk's office.
That's correct. That's a procedural question. It was not testified to by the expert, and you can check it out.
I had merely made a representation of the half of the applicant when completeness was issued.
Yeah, and completeness is a procedural step, and it's not, certainly not relevant to this witness's testimony.
Mr. Johnson, I'm going to have to ask you to find your questions to the testimony witness only because due to the lateness of the hour, you're just taking more and more time, and I think it's inappropriate.
There was testimony by Mr. Lang about, I guess, bulk calculations that were done in one of the slides, maybe you can find it, was missing some, so it said it will comply, but it didn't say how you're going to comply. Was that updated?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Did you clarify that question, please? I didn't understand.
Bulk calculations. There was a slide with bulk calculations.
There was a chart that indicated compliance, meaning there were, there was a chart that said will comply because it had requirements and we were indicating it would comply.
So what is your question?
Some, some of the calculations actually had a calculation. It said if it was 60 feet, we gave 60 feet, or we gave 62 feet, that just said will comply. I just wanted to clarify what that meant.
I don't see the question. I don't understand the question. Do you have a question for the witness here?
I do.
Yeah, I don't, I find it's very objectionable.
There it is, Max Building Height.
So what's your question?
Proposed, it says it will comply.
Each of the buildings are different heights. It's an indication that all of them comply.
Thank you. None of this came out, it was so objectionable. All right, I'd like to go then to testimony denied, March 11th. You testified as to a floodplain approval that you received. Is this the same as complying with the Township's storm water management plan of 2009?
You're talking about two separate issues. The permit that we received from NJDEP is an individual permit under their flood hazard area rules, and it also indicates, as highlighted on Slide 59, that we've met the state's storm water rules. The 2009 storm water plan is not actually a requirement under the township, it's not part of the ordinance. So it is not in and of itself a requirement.
Thank you. You testified as to the community garden location, and you showed the slide dividing the property into two lots, 1902 and 1903, I believe?
Mr. Chair, I could ask that you ask this particular witness to not reiterate the testimony that was given, to merely ask the question. It's not necessary for him to summarize the testimony. It's taking up valuable time. If there's a question such as, how far is the community garden, or what is the intent of the community garden, there's no need to summarize the testimony.
Is the community garden-
Just get to the point, please.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just trying to-
Well, just try hard.
I'm trying hard, I'm trying hard. Thank you for the encouragement. The community garden must be on the residential portion, not on the commercial portion. It was not clear to me when you put up that slide. Can you just show that slide again?
Mr. Johnson, I'm going to say, this is too repetitive. I saw this before, earlier tonight. You're just wasting the panel's time up here, to tell you the truth. I find you defensive. So unless you can come up with some real quick questions, I think you ought to go and take a chair. Thank you. I mean, I remember when Mr. Lang put his pointer on it earlier. I don't know if you were paying attention or not.
Ms. Krimko, do you have something to say?
Any other objectors from Ocean Township want to pose any questions? Since I don't see anyone, I'm going to open this up to out-of-town questioners who've been patiently waiting.
I have been waiting.
That's you, Monica.
Thank you. But I'm happy to let you-
She's not from out of town.
She's not, she's, I mean-
Yeah, but she already posed a question, a very lengthy question. She can wait behind you. I said this a long time ago, I don't know. You don't want a term?
I'm happy to have a term. I don't want to interrupt them.
You're not interrupting. I gave a directive some time ago.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Monica Muzurjic of West Long Branch. I gave the spelling of my name to this young lady. The pedestrian crossing that was referred to, it's my understanding from your testimony that the pedestrians will have to cross over two jug handles, in effect, to be able to get to the bus stop if they're coming from the south, correct?
I'm not sure why you think there's two jug handles coming from the south.
Because at this time, we have a jug handle that currently exists on the corner of Deal and Route 35, correct?
Oh, you mean, you mean the existing jug handle. So yes, so there will be adding a second jug handle. Yes, there'll be a far side jug handle.
So what, I mean, has anyone looked at the amount of time that it's going to take pedestrians to be able to cross, as well as the time delay that will be needed to be added to the traffic coming from the south to the north?
That's not how these pedestrian crossings work.
The traffic engineer will offer detail to answer those questions. This engineer offered the layout-
Fine, yeah, doesn't apply to this witness, thank you. If I can please bother you to show me not just the garbage site for the hotel, which you did indicate, but the sites at which the dumpsters will be located for each of the, the Wawa, the retail-
We did all that at the first hearing. We went through the PowerPoint, and he indicated the garbage location, the loading location.
Would you be able, please, show the garbage again? Because I was here for all of that, and I don't remember, and I'm sure if I don't-
This is going to be, Mr. Chair, this is going to be a lengthy hearing. There's going to be multiple hearings. We can't be expected to have the witness go back to testimony from previous hearings.
I understand.
If you don't remember, then I suggest that I'm happy to email it to you, or you can file an open request and review it in the town. The applicant is trying to present its case. We're presenting it, we're not going to-
I understand, so you're not going to answer me because it was answered already, and I have to find it, okay? The locations at which delivery will be made for people's furniture, beds, et cetera, for the 70 units, for food, for Wawa, for the tankers to be filling the gas station tanks, where will they be located?
So for people moving in, moving vans would park either in a roadway or in-
But could you show me on a map, please? Some map where I can understand visually, that would help a lot.
So the residential portion of the project is on the east side. There are roadways that circulate around. So these are 35 roadways. They have parking on both sides. So trucks could park either in the driveway for smaller trucks, larger trucks would park out in front of the driveway and unload, which would be extremely typical for residential uses. Each of the commercial uses has a dedicated loading area that services it, as I previously testified.
Okay, and there's no restriction as to trucks entering or exiting off Deal Road? They're welcome to do that as well as Route 35, or are they being restricted to 35?
There is no site restriction for truck. The site is capable of handling trucks from all driveways.
So capable of, so there are no restrictions, all entry points, right? At this time?
The traffic engineer will address off-site traffic issues, but on-site, we are capable of receiving trucks at every driveway.
Mentioned was made of a fence along Deal Road. You're shaking your head, but I did hear that, so.
I'm not aware of a fence along Deal Road, no.
Are you aware of any fencing at all? Because if there's a community, so-called community, it's really restricted-
Can I answer that? There is a fence along the community garden, between the community garden, that was mentioned not long ago-
No, that's why I'm asking, because I've heard reference to a fence, so it's strictly the community garden.
Mr. Lang answered it.
There was also testimony that there was going to be a fence in between the backyard of the residential and the commercial. It's not along Deal Road, it's perpendicular to the road.
Okay, and then along Deal Road, other than the fence that the chairman just referenced, and along Route 35, there will be no fences restricting people at, people sitting with children in the community, the community, the site garden or the site community center. There's no protection for the children from the highways of both Deal Road and Route 35?
The community garden and the top lot are not located along Deal Road or Route 35, and they are both enclosed by a fence.
Okay. The, someone was trying to ask, I'll ask you, the foundations that are being dug with regard to the hotel.
Excuse me, can I ask this question? It was asked previously.
It wasn't, somehow.
It was, and attorney directed that-
It was a question with regard to a basement.
A basement, okay.
I'm not asking a basement question. I'm asking-
The foundation, okay.
The foundation depth, thank you. What would be the foundation depth to which you're digging to construct the hotel?
The structural engineer would do that, it'd be part of the building permits mission.
And you, as a site planner, have no idea what that would be approximately?
I have an idea, but it would be the architect, the structural engineer.
Or typically, for this type of building.
Okay, that's not what, that's not what he's here as his expertise. I can't let him testify to that because he's not an expert in structural engineering.
Okay, so I'm restricted to asking that of the transportation person. Why is so little of the impervious ground cover being? There's impervious and pervious ground cover. A portion was added near the scrub hole, if I recall.
Were you talking about the pervious pavement?
Yes, so we have impervious surface. The bulk of this construction would be impervious. There's pervious in a certain area. Why is so little of this site the pervious, which is beneficial to the environment? Why is so much of this impervious?
That's a term you didn't need to add that comment for the last part, about it being beneficially, the sense can why it is-
Why, sorry.
It's at the applicant's discretion, or particularly applicant's engineer's discretion, which BNP is to employ. We believe that the mix of BNP's proposed here meets and then frankly exceeds storm order requirements both locally and at the state level.
On what page can I find the soil?
So you're an attorney?
Yes, I am.
Are you here representing anything about it?
No.
And you live in West Long?
Correct. I'm an interested person who cares about this area. Soil borings, I was, I heard that they would be available to the public, but we weren't sure. Where can we find, in the packet, would you know where we can find the soil boring information?
I moved geotechnical reports into evidence, they would be contained in the geotechnical-
In the geotechnical, thank you.
And I believe the locations will also be shown on the maps that are probably-
Thank you. My last question is, do I understand that if the applicant is able to substantiate that what they're proposing is in compliance with all local, municipal, state, and governmental requirements, that the board has no choice but to grant this application?
Are you asking me that question?
I'm asking-
He's not, he can't answer us, but I can't let him answer us to the legal implications of an application. He's, he's a plan out, he's an engineer.
But I have to ask that question because at some point this evening, early on in this evening, Ms. Krimko, you stated in a way that I would think many people would understand, the answer to my question would be a yes, that there is no choice, provided, because I keep hearing, we've met the compliances, we've met the compliances of this, this ordinance and that, so am I correct in understanding, because I-
It is the applicant's position that the legal authorization that this board has is twofold. One, does it meet with the ordinance requirements and the cycling requirements? And if the answer is yes, then did the applicant meet the burden group for the variance group? It is the applicant's position that if we meet the site plan requirements, and the variances are basically site-related and not substantial as to the use and the density and the impact, then yes, there is legal precedent that this board is constrained. A board has limited jurisdiction with regard to what to act with a site plan application as opposed to a use merits.
So again, my understanding from what you're saying is that, provided variance and other, all application requirements are met, no other input will be considered or is allowed to be considered by the board? That's the way it sounds.
Let me assist the process here. So it is true that we were supposed to be limiting the questions to just a line. Now, obviously, Ms. Krimko is indicating a legal position, and it's her right to do that, to the extent that we do have some legal components here that may be helpful to everybody here. And of course, as you know, councillor, later on, the objectors will have the right to state what their position is, and it may very well be a difference. And ultimately, the board will have to make that determination as to, if you differ with your legal opinion, then that'll be heard, and it'll be, find its back and conclude with the law, okay?
Okay, but I did need to ask that question. Thank you.
Mr. Ling, you testify about the Naran Haltigo that is going to be-
Your name for the record, please?
H A N O T. Mr. Ling, you testify about the Naran Haltigo that is going to be no signs indicating that the tractor trailers that they are going to pull into Wawa for diesel, they will not have service. I'm, I'm hoping that's going to be limited to the staff, that's going to be-
Is there a question? Can you get to the point, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's going to be no signs, and it's limited to the staff to indicate to the tractor trailers who are pulling for diesel, that there's going to, they are not going to be serviced.
Correct.
Are you aware that the typical Wawa service, about 500 or so patrons every hour?
May we have to confine your questions to his testimony?
Yes, regarding his testimony.
You're asking him about the volume of cars coming into the Wawa.
Okay.
So is there a question attached to it?
Traffic engineer will testify on it for both the volumes for Wawa and the other uses.
So in order for him to testify on your own, that's going to be limited to the staff pumping the diesel, they are going to be the ones telling the tractor trailers that are pulling for diesel that they are not going to have service. My question to him is, there are 500 patrons coming into a Wawa every hour. That staff is going to remember what are the rules, what not to service, what to service if there are no signs?
Ms. Hanut, you might not, Ms. Hanut might not like the answer, but she, no matter how many times she asks him, the answer remains the same. So if you don't, if Ms. Hanut doesn't think that that's a sufficient policy, then when the public portion arises, she can offer testimony as to why that policy is inadequate. But repeating the question to the witness is not going to change the answer.
I asked him two questions. The first question about the no signs, and then if he was aware of the amount, of the volume, and if it's up to the staff of the Wawa to tell these people that they are not going to have service.
You heard the direction. You can't answer that question, okay? It's for public commentary at the end of the hearing.
That's fine. Now, other than the statutory requirements, does, Mr. Ling, other than the statutory requirements, does the project that you presented before the town promote the general welfare?
I'm not sure that I even understand the question.
I understand it.
The only, the only context that Mr. Lang testified is within the confines of the municipal land use law. He's not here as an expert on the general welfare of anything other than in the context of the municipal-
That's been answered. Go on to the next question, please.
The next, I don't have any other question. Other than, Ms. Krimko was instructing the board, and to echo the gentleman who's there, that he was, Ms. Krimko was instructing the board and giving direction to the board as to how to enforce restricted time for the public. She said, you indicated that she is only helping as an attorney for the applicant, but she, at the beginning, she was instructing your gentleman.
I don't understand what you're trying to-
There was no instructions from my board as an applicant, I'm not a applicant.
Thank you.
Ma'am? Name and address, please.
Beverly Harris, H. Dublin Lane, Rumsen, Jersey. Mr. Lang, I believe you said in the first meeting that green infrastructure is near and dear to your heart, and I believe that. Is it true that in studying green infrastructure, you're taught to recognize environmental soundness in various developmental plans?
It's a very broad question, but yes, I'm, you know, in terms of storm order management, I'm concerned with how the storm order mitigation is going to respond, and how that will mitigate any storm order action with the developer.
So which, in your judgment, would be the greener of these two hypothetical development plans?
I have to object that if you can't ask a question as to hypothetical development, if there's a specific question as to-
Okay, so I can save that for the comments.
Yes, you can. Thank you. Goodness. Go ahead, Mr. Howell, show them. There he is.
You're looking at me? Oh, you're...
You are Mr. Howell, are you now?
Yes, I thought my dad walked in for a second. Yes, you were looking around the microphone, so I didn't really know you were looking at me. I have a couple of very...
Can the microphone go down?
I'm sorry. How am I doing? Sorry? I'd like to go back to the environmental impact study if possible. There's a few things that are unclear to me, and I'd like to cover some new ground if possible. I have to get back to the mic. Do you have the environmental impact study handy, sir?
Yes.
On page 10, it talks a lot about air quality, there's a lot of technical stuff there, about ozone, I need a second to take a look at it.
Is there a specific question?
Yes, there's a specific question. Talking about the days of the year when the ozone quality was, they're talking about the number of days when ozone quality was unacceptable, and they use the term non-attainment of eight-hour ozone standard. I'm giving to an easy one here, I think. And in the last paragraph, if I could just get mine to come up here, I'm typing as fast as I can. On page 11, it talks about the days in which the ozone level was unhealthy. The last sentence there, if you can get to it, goes like this. "One of those days, May 25th, 2016, in which ozone exceeds or quartered for each station, was influenced by a large wildlife in Canada." I read that a number of times, and is there a very large animal up there spewing out ozone, because that's supposed to be wildfire?
I'm sure they're referring to a large wildfire.
Okay, everybody makes mistakes. On page 12, you're looking at the, there's a chart here for comparative sound levels, and it seems pretty inclusive, it's good stuff here, common sound.
Mr. Howell, please just ask a question, don't offer commentary.
Yeah, you're right, go. The typical DBA for this site is stated at 50.8 decibels, is that correct?
I'm sorry, what are you referring to? I'm sent a tailor referring to, but what specifically are you referring to?
I'll find it in here. The ambient noise, it would be in the last paragraph. The ambient noise level of the project can be expected, blah, 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 percentage, between 50 and 80 decibels. And I noticed in the, in the paragraph, in the chart above, there was no listings for things like horns or diesel trucks, is, have they been taken into account when you're trying to calculate this ambient noise?
Ambient noise is background noise, so it's not a specific source as the general pin, if you will, of the overall cycle.
Right, I understand, but you called out specific things in the top, and the threshold here, bed and midnight, all of these above. And two, I'm not gonna say other thing, I, should horns and diesel trucks be in these common sounds in the calculation of what the noise would be coming from the site?
There's not a calculation here. We're given typical ranges, ambient noise level, it's not specific, there's no calculation or model that was done.
Let's imagine. In page, on paragraph 323, I do not have the page number, I'm sorry. Talks about lossless rare species in the vicinity, and there's a lot of references to the National Heritage Program, and I really tried to understand that, but in appendix D, which you referenced, there's something called DLUR, and I can't find what that acronym means.
Division of Land Use Regulation, is that the DEP? As they explained earlier, in connection with their wetlands application and their request for a wetlands approval to probably, probably transition area, transition area wave, they have, the DEP refers it to at least 10 inside agencies, one of them is National Heritage, so that's, but that's all under land use regulation, the Department of Land Use Regulation, that's what DLUR is.
So I'm trying to get the...
So you see things like LURP, land use regulation permit or land use regulation program. LUR is land use regulation at DEP.
Okay, I found the others, I couldn't find that.
This is not a question about the application, it's a question about education. So really, just keep it to the application, please.
I'll do my best, I won't... There are a number of conclusions that come, that are done in hearings, and I'd like to know if the conclusions about the impact, environmental impact, is from historical findings that are available online, as opposed to an actual contemporary survey.
In terms of this report, and really any AS that's done of this nature, it's a, what I call a desktop study, it's not fieldwork associated with this study.
That's good enough, thank you.
Mr. Chair, what I'd like to ask is, I know that the applicant has agreed that Mr. Lang will be available if questions come up when Ms. Chris Carroll reports comes up. What I'd like to ask is, quite a bit of time was spent as the board had a situation and there was a lot of interruptions. I'd like to conclude Mr. Lang's test, questions tonight, so I would ask that...
It was five minutes.
What?
Five minutes, we're...
No, it was only one example, Ms. Close, I wasn't, wasn't...
Go ahead.
So what I'm suggesting is...
We're not following particulars, you want to finish with Mr. Lang.
I, I would like to have the public questioning of Mr. Lang be concluded tonight, have it closed, I will not be representing him for questions unless the engineer has questioned him.
Are there any other people in the audience who have new questions that obviously are not redundant, and don't relate to comment with regards to Mr. Lang's testimony? I don't see anybody raising their hand, so it looks like we have concluded.
I make a motion to close the, close this subpar...
The public portion, I think.
Yeah, the public portion, yeah.
Is there a second? All right, second one. Roll call goes to this one.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Dr. Di Benedetto?
Yes.
Mr. Dufilia?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Sienna?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Verri?
Yes.
I move to, uh...
My second.
Wait, we have to, before you adjourn, I would like it, if you would please carry this to the next meeting without further notice, if you do that before you adjourn, I would have to renotice.
That's correct.
Okay, it's to the next meeting, which I believe is March 25th.
Well, having said that, you said in the beginning that you're always good to repeat that, so that everybody's more clear on it. And again, in the beginning of the meeting, we talked about the fact that it will be a regular meeting, we don't know when this application will be heard, that it will be on the list. It's also possible it might not be here, but it will be on the list, we'll have to see how many applications there are in the midst of this...
But it will be carried to the meeting of March 25th, 7:30 at the township municipal building, so that will be confirmed.
That is correct. I make a motion to...
Can I ask a question about the next meeting? Can I ask a question?
No, you may not.
You were gonna tell us, you had said that you were going to do it, you're here, is it at high school at the town?
Please, roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Dr. Di Benedetto?
Yes.
Mr. Dufilia?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Sienna?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Chair. Yes.